I am calling the special committee of the whole meeting of the Town of Gibson's to order on April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at eleven oh one A M. And we're honored to be gathered on the traditional territories of the Scahomish Nation. And we have a very basic agenda here because we're just looking at the biggest topic of the year, which is the operating budget. So that's the one, the one item on the agenda that we need to adopt. Moved by Councilor Yandrati, seconded Councilor Kroll to adopt the agenda. All those in favor? The motion carries. And I will turn the meeting over to the Director of Finance, who will give us his report on the operating budget.
Thank you, Mayor White. Turning to page five then of the agenda package, five of fifty-five pages, is the staff report. Highlights off that. Looking to do a good job reviewing the material with the committee and looking forward to receiving input and direction from you on things you've seen and very happy to respond to the questions. So we're working with a new budget book this year, which is based on a really detailed labor table. And it includes two years of comparative data, which is very helpful when looking at nonlabor figures. And a lot of effort has gone into reviewing the sharing of costs. Turning on to page two of the report, across the core services. And by core services, we, in accounting terms, refer to cost centers or segments. And just running, running down that organization, much of it is the same, maybe a different name, but some of it's new. Council and legislative services, administrative services, sorry, go back, council and legislative services. The one area there is, it's, it's still principally council, but now it shows, well, what are the supporting resources that enable council to fulfill its legislative function? And look after all of the community's needs. Administrative services includes all the sort of core back office at time functions needed to make an organization this size work. We have development services, and that one does need a little bit of clarity. So out in normal local government practice, you'd find in there your planning and engineering. And what we're really talking about is the whole office and management team complement of planning and infrastructure here. Community services, yes, that's new. Like a lot of local governments, there are a number of functions grouped in there. And here, it's harbor, marinas, and oceanfront. And that picks up on a theme in the strategic plan of that that area is worthy of more attention. And then economic development, efforts to support visitors and film is a second area. And then a core third area for community services is all the interactions with nonprofits, which mostly is provision of buildings, but lots of other things come up too. Housing, for example, childcare. Protective services, so not including policing, bylaw, housing outreach program, emergency operations center, and the policing services section, which is why twenty twenty-seven is the expectation, so it's part of this five-year financial plan. Then all of the rest of the items there are current standard items in the financial structure here. So now, all these core services have their own operating budgets. And within them, many of them where the key functions were just all lumped together have been broken apart, so you can see exactly what's there. It's very helpful for the managers and directors of the standalone functions to have their own standalone budget. Now, in preparing a new budget book and moving so much data around, so for example, I'd say half the figures have moved from twenty-four. In particular, a lot of the comparative figures had to be generated based off how the twenty-five allocations were. When you move that much around in the way of numbers, you kick up a lot of turbulence when you're trying to compare twenty-four to twenty-five. And that detailed set of sheets, looking at all the changes, picks up on some of that where it's like, well, I know it's sixty thousand and it's attributable to moving everything around, but I can't be more precise with you as to what exactly moved. So, yeah, a little bit of additional work has shown that that actually is a reasonable response on, on those points. So.
Yeah, I would, if you could, break up as much as we can to ask some questions as we go, I think.
Sure.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have a question now, it's better than waiting.
I think it's better because it's got a lot to take in. So, Councilor Thompson, go ahead.
I'm prepared to have a microphone. Do what? Oh, you've got mine? Oh, okay. Here we go. To your point with that, when we, in going through the budget, when we see from somewhere else in the budget, is, is that offset then theoretically by the other line comments that say offset by allocations elsewhere? One in, one out?
Exactly. And the only place that gets tricky is there's the general municipal fund, and then the standalone sewer fund and the standalone water fund. And, and on that, that note, the first version came up with some findings in terms of required revenues and taxation, which just, no matter all our checks, we just still couldn't believe that there wasn't something missing. So the version two that came out yesterday, and this handout package you have, and it's published online too, is now version two. And based on the further review and checks, we did, or I did find that I had missed giving the general fund quite a bit of revenues owed it by the utilities for expenses it was paying for the utilities. It didn't entirely solve the challenge, but it certainly helped. And then it ended up giving us figures which were roughly equivalent to all of the direct changes we could see. Turning to page three of the report. So staff are looking under next steps one, we've, we've done that. We, we have fixed the budget workbook. It's, it's now accurate, it's now correct. As Mayor White noted, next steps to council is requested to provide staff with guidance on the maximum tax rate increase that council is prepared to support in two thousand and twenty-five. And even with a relatively high level of taxation increase, staff will have plenty of work to go away and reduce a number of other items in the twenty-five budget in order to get a balanced budget. But we'll touch on that more shortly. And that ends the things I just wanted to highlight in the staff report. If there were any questions on that staff report, I'd be happy to take them.
I see no others at this point. Councilor Lumley.
Is today, is, I know there's a lot of numbers here. Is, I just wondered through the mayor, like, is today just a, like, kind of like a general question and answer and maybe, you know, dive deeper into some of the numbers at, at the next meeting? Is that what we're hoping for? Or, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, it's, it's a new format. And just for example, I guess this would be my question. When I look at I T, the I T function, and all the allocations that you see in each category, like, so reallocated from here, reallocated from here, reallocated from here, but then the information technology function is only reduced as a line item by three percent. So if you look on, let's see, if you look on page ten, you can see where the I T amounts are transferred in to, say, council legislative assembly, so legislative services, sorry. So it says I T transferred from elsewhere. So that's twenty-four thousand, but the, like, the reduction from twenty-four is, is only three percent or eight thousand. So I'm just having, and there's, and if there's I T being allocated to all these departments, yet the I T line item doesn't seem to be budging. So I'm just wondering, is the I T line, like, are we, for overall, it seems like if I looked at this, I'd say like our I T budget is like completely out of control. That would be my first comment, but that's, I don't know if that's up to the Director of Finance to explain why our I T costs are so, so high, or, but that would be helpful. But I'm just, I'm just trying to see where the numbers are.
I think that's exactly what we should be asking about at this stage. I mean, because everything has been moved around, so we need to understand how and why. And so that's a really good start to ask about.
So we can start with I T, I guess?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No, no, we can't. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we need to, we will touch on that. Okay, there is a sequence of going through this. It is, my presentation is not intended to be ad hoc until we've gone through the material and the budget sections.
One by one, okay. So I just, so we're going to do page by page. Right now, we're just doing very, but, I mean, I think.
So that's my first question.
It also touches upon just the general reallocation of things here, but we'll, we'll still be doing that page by page.
Sure. And, and if it will make everyone more comfortable, we could use this as an example. We could go and visit I T right now. How about that? Is that, is that good?
No, I, if, I, I don't, if, that was my, kind of my initial question, Mayor, was that this is what we're doing, we're not delving deep into things. And I can appreciate that the Director of Finance has, has a, this is, he's got a plan today. So I don't, I just didn't want to screw that plan up. So I, I think we should.
I don't think any, we, we, we don't know the plan up here. Like, we, we, we received this on Friday and then changes this morning, and I understand you've been working on it over the weekend and everything. So we're just trying to.
So, okay, so.
So right now, let's be clear, what, what kind of questions are you, are you looking for right now?
Well, I, I'm not looking for questions, I'm just looking for understanding that there's a methodology for reviewing such a budget, and we're right at the beginning of it. So we've looked at the staff report and clarified things there. And as we go in here, I will tour guide you through this in some pretty significant depth. And as we go through the parts, when we're in I T, I'm more than happy to respond and clarify and show how numbers move around. But part of my responsibility is to try and provide the committee with a full understanding of what we've got here in very limited time. And I can do that, but we do have to follow the tour.
So I think it probably makes sense to get into the tour, and then we'll ask questions that way instead of, I don't think there are going to be any overall questions.
And Mayor White, though, through, through each piece, I will stop and ask you if the committee has questions. So people won't have to wait forever for, for a chance to query. Page nine of fifty-five. So it was noted, noted a little bit earlier there on the staff report that a revision was required. And yes, information went out on that last night and this, this morning, but it was a pretty simple one. If you look up top left there in all these sort of pink ochre color spots, you'll see, oh, revenue gap correction, two hundred and ninety-three thousand. And without getting us into the details, if you go down to the bottom of the sheet, there you see, oh, here's all these items that the municipal fund, for a total of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, should be getting revenue from the utility funds. So hence the correction. We'd started off with a hundred and thirty thousand in version one, and we're up to four hundred and twenty-four thousand. That being said, the adjusted revenue gap, so up in the top right there in the blue, is now a fifteen percent taxation gap, six hundred and fifty-one thousand. And if you look down on the middle of the sheet on the left, you will see a option, it's not the only option, but option for resolving revenue gap, considering an example, it would be okay. Twenty-five municipal taxation revenue could increase by ten percent, that would raise four hundred and thirty-three thousand. And then, of course, in the background, in tax rate setting, there are some non-market value adjustments from B C assessment that would essentially decrease that to nine. And with this example, while we'd still have to have plus draft budget cost reductions of five percent, or equal to five tax points in twenty-five, that would be summing two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ten. So just at a high level on, on what the committee is looking at now, at the end of this session, it's, it's a discussion on what to do on this point, and that's where the decision is. But before we get there, we have a number of things to review. Are there any questions on this one, page nine of fifty-five? We, we'll, we'll come back to it. Page, page ten starts a whole analysis of changes, twenty, twenty-five to twenty-four of the functions. And again, right at this moment, this is useful reference, and we'll refer to it and come back to it, but I don't propose that we read through the four or five pages together at this point. Turning to page fifteen, though, this one page is worth a visit for a little while just to ensure that everyone has a great of understanding of what's in here. So that's page fifteen of fifty-five in the package. Yep, that's it. It's got a big schedule A one in the top left of the page, lots of orange up top. Does the committee have that page ever? Good, okay. So I'll just tour you around. First of all, on the left-hand side, in the, in the revenue block in pink, red, whatever that color is supposed to be, transfers from other town funds, utilities. And I just wanted to point that one out to you, because, yeah, version one, all the figures to the right of that were a hundred and thirty thousand a year. So now we've corrected them to roughly four hundred and twenty-four thousand a year. And that is, in terms of corrections, none of the numbers on all those other sheets changed, it was just the missing link. Now, let's go down to the very bottom of the page with the yellow. There's that six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar gap right now because, following that twenty-five column, we have total revenues of eleven million plus, well, eleven million one hundred and eleven thousand. And down the bottom, we have a need of eleven million seven hundred and sixty-two, hence the gap. Bottom left, you will notice capital asset investments, and there are no figures. That's because all of the capital assets aren't mixed in here yet, so that we're not mixing different things together. Once the committee has finished its work here, we actually already have a list with those figures. Those figures don't impact general municipal taxation, and they will just slot in here, and that will complete the general fund. But I did, I did want to show those to you because all of the lines which have no figures there are all because, oh, that's an item for, for capital that needs to be put in when, when we do that. So up at the top now, twenty twenty-five in that orange box, often a local government is contemplating a tax increase. And it's quite helpful that when you're trying to increase taxes for the R C M P and you're trying to increase cap, taxes for more capital for infrastructure, to get those broken out so that the public can see them too. And then you see the other figure is, okay, that's really your budget increase figure. This year, council has already determined from work earlier this year that there, it isn't necessarily to increase taxes this year for the R C M P, so that one's going to stay zero. And there is no room for, right at this moment, for doing substantial new initiatives on taxation for infrastructure, so that number's going to stay zero. So the only question remaining is, okay, in order to make the final version of this budget work, what, what percentage will be there? And in situations like this where we have a fifteen percent gap, it's quite often the practice for councils to say to staff, well, we'll give you up to this amount, and we send you away to solve the rest and come back and show us how you did it, because we at least want to make sure that how you solved it's reasonable. But it's, it is, in that sense, a partnership method. Now, big change for twenty-seven and for this five-year plan is, we, we now have incorporated the R C M P contract in our finances, and I'll show you the spots. So it's all in blue, and up in revenue, there's a couple of blue lines. The first is property taxes, R C M P, for Town of Gibson's, R C M P service, twenty twenty-seven. So our current taxation level is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight, and the plan is to continue it just so, it will collect another five hundred and ninety-eight thousand for reserve. And then to increase this in essentially two percent taxation increments, the next following years, to finally get up to when we learn what the true annual cost will be. And the second line purports to, right now, the town gets a police tax requisition from the province, puts it on the tax notice, collects the money. When the province steps away from being the contractor with R C M P, they won't collect any money anymore, but the town will need that six hundred thousand from the taxpayers. If you see it there, there's three years of six hundred thousand. It's disflagging at that point, we'll roll that over too, and that will be collected directly as taxes for policing purposes.
Thank you, Mayor. This regards the R, R C M P. I thought that was just the equation, then changed from thirty percent to seventy, but we're still going to receive some money from the province, is not the case?
No, by way of clarification, so right now, the town, through its property tax notice, is collecting six hundred thousand for the province for policing. And it's also collecting five hundred and ninety-eight thousand taxation directly to build up the reserve. When we get to twenty twenty-seven, the province won't send a requisition for six hundred thousand anymore. But in order for us to be able to afford it, we need to also make sure we keep that six hundred thousand going, plus the other taxes we're already doing, they'll just merge together. Does, does that help? No?
We, the requisition means we send it to the province right now.
No, I know, but is the province, I think in my mind is, it, the province will still contribute maybe thirty percent. So are we?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I see what you mean. The federal government will be paying thirty percent under the new contract, yeah.
Thank you.
But we don't see that, we don't need to, that's not a, we don't need to make that requisition anymore, that goes straight from the federal government to the province.
And just finishing up on the R C M P then, okay, so we, down in the bottom in expenditures in blue, you can see the big change. One minute we're, we're, we're spending some minor stuff, municipal resources at the hundred and seventy-three thousand level, which is mostly to do with the detachment real estate, and that, then we're at one point eight eight million. And the last piece there in blue, nearer the bottom of revenues in twenty twenty-seven is, well, we're not taxing at the one point eight million dollar level yet, but we've saved up all that money, and you can see in revenues, ah, transfers from reserves, R C M P budget gap, and there's money coming out to make up the difference, while the town adjusts and finally gets an equilibrium between taxation and cost of contract. Another small point that comes out in the summary, but it's important, it's in the twenty-five column, there's two greens, one up top, government travel, transfers and grants for operating, and then down the bottom, next to development services, one million nine hundred and seventy-four. This is just to flag that the operating expense figures down here included those listed operating projects, and there's a huge amount backed up in development services for completion in twenty twenty-five. And that's why that line item is so big in twenty-five in, in both spots. Moving to another item, and this one's a bit of a flag and a concern, both now and, and for the immediate future. If you look down at the bottom, just above capital asset investments, you'll see transfers to surplus, and you don't see any money going in there. And that, and that's okay. Normally, the budget's done, revenues equal expenses, and that line, or at least for me, is always zero. But inherent underneath it is this idea that there should always be some slack in the budget, and providing everything goes well, we want the slack to come through, a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, so it goes to surplus. Because if you now look up near the bottom of expenditures, you'll see this line that starts with a hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred, and yes, it does go down, but it's transfers from surplus for operating. And, and it's a typical and reasonable-looking line in terms of the size of figures. It's, it's just that we need to make sure the budget has enough money to supply that when the time comes to spend it. And we'll be visiting one or two other spots in the documentation where I'll show you exactly the challenge. So is, are there any other, I mean, I believe we'll come back to this sheet possibly, but if there are no other questions on it, or any questions on it?
So, yeah, I'll ask about that. So we're not planning for any transfers to surplus, is what you're showing us here at the bottom, but that tends to happen every year, there tends to be a surplus generated. But, but the concern is, we don't have it in our plan. I just want to understand the concern.
The, the situation is the town has very little unrestricted surplus.
Yeah.
Much, much less than would be recommended. And I wouldn't recommend trying to fix something like that right away. It's, it, it's just something you note and fix over time. And in order to do that, it's important that the budget not get so compacted and reduced that you don't get some, a small amount of money flowing out at the end of the, of the year to go there.
So how is that different then from just plant, like, a planned surplus is more a reserve, right? It's not a surplus, but it's, if we want some money for. It's not a surplus, but it's, if we want some money for, we'd put it into reserves for certain things.
Yeah. It's a continuum. On one hand, we have capital reserve funds that are very specific for specific purposes. Money's intended just for that purpose. Hopefully, the reserves build up there. It gets allocations of investment earnings, unfortunately limited only to interest. But you have it there so that, you know, oh, I can only use that for buildings. That's what everyone intended. That's what the money went there for. On the other side, and you need some of both, is unrestricted surplus, which is, hey, it's just the excess of revenues over expenses over time. There's no direct grab on it. But the notional understanding there is, it's a place where there's, you're short of funding for projects, so you pool money out of that surplus for the town share. And it's also, in the term, in the case of a general fund, it's your emergency cash flow. So for a town this size, it would be, you know, in the $2 million neighborhood is what you'd like to have. And we have, after our '24 year end, about $860,000. So it's important to pay some attention over the coming years to that, but not to solve it in one go.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think even kind of looking at it in a more broad text, context, everything's cost, costs have gone up. And we've always, probably in the past, we've always had enough surplus without needing to pay a lot of attention to it and putting a number on it. But over the last few years, there's been significant inflation, and costs have gone up. And we've also, I think, I want to establish a context here for council, too. We've been very tight on our budget the last couple of years, in particular because of the policing costs. And I think part of the context there, too, was just the grave concern we had when we could have gone over $5,000. I mean, I think the council was expecting, the whole town was expecting, the RCMP was expecting. And we didn't have enough money put away last census. So we responded to that by going, like, we need to be ready this time. So we aggressively put 5% down the last two years. So that, we all need to recognize that that's really made the budget tight, and that's probably directly connected to the surplus situation. Counsel Lumley.
Yeah, thank you. Through the mayor, a couple of questions. In revenues and understanding this is a budget, I know we discussed about the disposition of land in the town, specifically, I think, the Beach Avenue property. Do we, do we put that in our budget now? Do we, we don't?
We talk about property. We talk about property in camera.
Oh, okay. But generally, if the town has, let's just say not specifically, but generally, if the town has property and you plan on disposing of it, would it not, would you not create a budget item for that? Like, because if it's a significant amount of money, say it's $350,000. I mean, that's like, that's a pretty large portion of the tax increase. Anyway, that's one question I have.
But I don't think we're in a position for any.
To budget it?
I mean, no, not right now. I don't think we're in a position for any such situation right now. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
But ask your other question.
But anyway, oh, yeah, capital asset investments. Those are all blank, too. I just, that was my, I know that we've sat here and allocated funds in the past for, like, to upgrade buildings and so on and so forth. I just wondered, does, like, does municipal accounting allow you just to expense? Is that like just an expenditure instead of investing in an asset, which then you'd have to depreciate over time? Or, I don't, I'm not sure. Because there's just zero there. I just, that was curious.
Wow. Yep. Through Mayor White. The capital part of this budget will be added on. And definitely, all of those items will be capitalized and amortized over time. And we'll see that list shortly. It's actually the next place to the way that we're going. And on the issue of sales of assets and other things, I think it's like a lot of items. If the council ended into an arrangement with somebody in '24 to do something, and it was known and things were arranged, usually, when that happens, it's not too long after or even at the same time that council makes it clear what the purpose of the proceeds will be. And if we have all that information, great. Into the budget it goes. But for things that are planned, assumed, but not certain, a lot, too many things not known, usually not. And usually, capital assets commonly seem to immediately get reserved for other capital asset investments, because we're always struggling for the town's share of investment financing.
And following on that, we've got nothing like that that's certain right now. We've just got some explorations. Counsel Kroll.
Thank you, Mayor White. And I don't know whether this is an appropriate place to bring it up, but it's something that's sort of lurking in the back of my mind, and it's sort of haunting. The province has had its status downgraded financially. Does that impact directly on municipal borrowing?
Borrowing with, yeah.
Through Mayor White, yes, it can, but not for sure. And the good news is, we have a debt schedule where there's a couple of comments on rate changes and things. And I'd be happy to come back to it then, if that's okay with you. Okay.
And that would be through MFA you're talking about, through Municipal Finance Authority? Okay, any other questions? Go on.
Turning to page 16 of 55. You've got a couple of large sheets there, I believe. Yeah. Page 16 of 55. And up top there in orange, it says Proposed Operating Projects List. And right after this, we'll do the Proposed Capital Projects List. In this particular case, this project list is almost all carryfords or small amounts of money, or items that arose in '24 that council blessed to be done. Therefore, we don't have a presentation of what each of these items is about and the story behind them and why the town's doing them, because you've been there before. A couple of points on this one, and just the key ones. If you go down to the bottom in the middle, you'll see 91%. So the figures all around there are the total operating projects are $1.5 million, $1,521,000. And right next to it, $1,391,000 of it, 91% of it is coming in grants. So that's not general municipal taxation. Yes, we have possibly way too many operating projects, but we couldn't do anything to help the municipal tax increase by doing less projects, because those taxes really aren't paying for them. And pretty much the balance of the operating projects are coming out of existing operating reserve accounts. And again, that's that notion of a little bit of money flowing through into surplus every year helps us stock those accounts with money to draw on when it's needed. The last item on the sheet I wanted to point you towards was right up in the top, the left-hand side. There's a column called Project Delivery. So while this may be the 2025 Operating Projects List, the truth is, many of these projects won't be fully delivered until 2027. Many of them will still be in progress prior to that and complete in '26. But there are a number that should be finished in '25. And you'll notice when we get there to a department, say Development Services, and there's a list of their operating projects, that they're actually presented there, spread out over five years. So you can see how it unfolds. But this is just, it's helpful, I know, to have a list of, what are all the approved projects out there that we've got going? Are there any questions on this sheet?
Counsel Lumley.
There, you're going to get tired of hearing that, I bet. But my question would be, I don't know if there's a way. But, and the Director of Finance, which I think smartly brought up earlier, that we don't want to fall into the same, like, the same problems that maybe the other governments have where they've got so many projects on the go. It's actually costing us more money. So one of the questions was, like, A, by not completing them, and B, just the fact that there's a, there has to be a percentage of, if you're building in some sort of contingency. Like, say, just, this is an example. And I don't want to get into details, but this is, there's an overall question. But say, if I look at this and go, the watershed monitoring report, where you look at it and you go, hey, it's completely covered by grant funding. But, and then in my, in my mind, I think, okay, but there's still going to be staff time on it. There's still going to be energy. There's still going to be paper. There's going to be, like, emails, IT, like, so it's, I don't know if it's ever been done, but, or if you can, but there must be a cost. There's still a cost to the town that is accepted when we do these, even 100% grant-funded. I just wondered if there's a percentage, or if we can somehow say, oh, you know what, if we do this project, it's going to cost the town this much money, like, as an extra, like, administrative, legislative, like, whatever it is, you know? It could be somebody just going into Rebecca's office for an hour and asking questions as they're, as they're working on this fully grant-funded project. You know what I'm saying? Is it caught in the grant fund, or is there extra expenses for sure?
Well, I'll say, in my experience with grants, usually, it's not eligible. I mean, sometimes you can charge a bit of administration, but quite often, they'll say, like, you can't charge salaries to this grant. In my knowledge of some grants, not all. But I also, also, I think from what you're saying, I think we're way closer to be, like, when, it's kind of hypothetical. When grants now come in, we're way closer to be able to do that now because of this rejigging of the budget that's been done. And you can, you can see it in the budget lines. It's like, for certain projects, you'll have a, you'll have a cost for the staffing involved in those certain areas now, rather than it all being lumped into general government. That's that 10% transfer. So that's my way of answering that question. But I'll go to our Director of Finance to elaborate in more detail, probably.
Well, sorry, am I on green? Yes, okay. As a general rule of thumb for these government grants, yeah, it's only the money, the figures listed here is only the money that you're going to spend on third parties, generally. How much is it going to cost us to have somebody oversee it? I think it's between 10% and 25% of whatever the grant is, which is why we get scared about the small grants, because you end up putting as much time in as the $25,000 grant provided. So we focus on the bigger ones, that's for sure. So as a, just a quick rule of thumb, that's an appropriate way of looking at it. Now, senior government is, especially with the bigger capital grants, is starting to acknowledge that, well, if it's direct project management you're doing, or if you're taking on a new staff member or a temporary person for this project, you can charge it there. So they're realizing that it's a challenge. And then, I mean, the most detailed answer on, how would we really know? If we adopted, like, law firm or engineering firm systems where everybody was accounting for their time, and we were 100% allocating everything to, like, an output, a project, a service, we could find out for sure. I have been part of two local governments because of budget pressures that started capitalizing the engineering component they had in-house to capital projects. And once you do it, you have to do it consistently everywhere on all things, all things capital. And that was a benefit with some grants, but in other spots, it was tricky finding the source of funding to pay for it. It wasn't as easy as it sounds. But hey, it helped us close a budget gap.
Counsel DeAndrea.
Sorry, just a clarification. I see reserve, so there is a grant. And when it says reserve, means we got the grant and it is on reserve. And then there's also other grants that is deferred revenue. Sorry, can you just clarify a little bit?
Thank you. I'm trying to help people in finance. So for example, that one, $15,000 will come in from MIA BC as a grant. And as soon as they approved it, they just sent the money. So we have it. So it's, for accounting purposes, in '25, it's not a grant receivable. We have it parked in deferred revenue. And when we've done the activity we promised to do for them, we'll take it out of deferred revenue and recognize it as revenue earned in 2025. Yep, thank you. If there are no more questions on operating project list, let's have a quick look at the, turn the page over.
And I just want to state the obvious in this one, that just in the format of it, there's no, there's no taxation column, because none of this is paid for by taxation.
And it is very important, because I have been at meetings where groups of seniors have come and asked if we, if council could, you know, cut back on the projects, not understanding that that won't help us, because we're not using the municipal taxes to pay for any of these projects.
And on the next page, we do have a taxation column, but there's nothing, nothing in it at the moment.
So we are on page 17 of 55. It's the second of the large sheets.
Oh, I mean, the previous page, sorry.
Yeah, the capital projects list. And same quick comments there, but in necessary checks. So down in the bottom in the middle, 90% of the 13 million in projects, 91% will be grant-funded. Moving over to the right, 4% will be debt-funded on the far right there. And then in the middle, DCC's 1% and reserve funds 3%. So no new general municipal taxation will be required to fund this list as presently presented. Again, we have items listed here that won't be completed until 2027. They're multi-year projects. But everything we're doing some work on or getting ready to start work on in 2025 is on this list. And this list is a significant amount. But, you know, for example, item number 10, Harbor Electrical Recharge Service Barge, $4 million. It's there because we know enough about this project and the proposal and the players and the alternative way of funding things that we can't not include it in our financial plan. But whether this will actually happen this way depends on how good our assumptions were and a lot of other people's decisions. I didn't have anything else on the sheet. Again, they're all projects you've seen before.
And I'm just going to go, Counsel Lumley has a question, but I just want to go back to his previous point, too, in that I think a value of putting some of these projects in that we don't necessarily have funding for yet, but are in there, are that in the operating budget, now we have allocations of staff time towards these things. We don't. Okay, but I thought, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to work with you here before shaking your head so vigorously. But here's my theory, which is, I mean, we've got economic development, for example. Like, now, we're allocating, I thought, some of our CEO's, CAO's time to economic development. And we're transparently showing that now, which we didn't before. And I, some of his work is going in towards, say, the charge barge. Like, so I can, I thought I was seeing that in the budget.
Mayor White, you're, well, you're absolutely right, that to the extent that we that to the extent that we've shared pieces of staff time over to economic development. Amongst the various things they're doing, one of the things is the charge barge or ferry, passenger ferry service project development, Persephone project development. I mean, all of these things that you have to spend some time on to keep them going and get them somewhere. So I mean, in that sense, yes, there is time being provided for the kinds of projects that council said, we want to pursue these things. But it's, you couldn't look at it and say, half of that time that's been allocated at economic development is for this. It's for all the things that could go on there. That's roughly how much time it's taking of staff. Even just responding to people at the marina on their lease occasionally soaks up staff time, reports that BC wants on their lease, so on and so forth.
That's a big, I think that's a big, a lot of work that's been done to do that allocation now. And it's much more transparent because that didn't exist at all before. It just said, you know, the cost of this general government. It was just kind of all in there. So I think it's, it is moving very closely towards, in a good way. Counselor Lumley.
Yeah, I'm just, it's another kind of general question. As far as like projects, like grant funded projects, like for your capital project, how far in advance? And again, because in my mind, it's just the fact that I know that, like, there's a number of staff members that are going to be, the town's going to be spending money paying that part of it. But how far in advance do you get? Like, is there, is there a way that you can say, like, there's these grants coming in the future? And here's the ones, hey, this grant sounds great and it's awesome, but we just can't afford to pursue this grant. It's not that important. Like, is there, is, like, how, or do these grant, do these projects just come out of thin air? Or not thin air, but like you got two months and you go, oh, we better get this grant right away. And clearly you're spending administrative time and money and energy into something that, you know, I don't know. I just wondered how far in advance you get the, like, the note, like, you know, you can get this grant. Is it two years in advance or is it a year?
Through the merits, it depends on, like, there's some grants that are consistent and regular. There's some which are not. And levels of, you know, changes in government can come with changes in grant programs as well. So there's a bit of an idea that there's some grant funding generally in the area that we could anticipate coming within a couple of years. But it's not always, we're not always able to predict that so reliably. I think to your other point of, we were systematic. And I know we've been to council for grant applications recently in the last couple of months. And we had, the conversation that we had is that we're not, due to our workload, we're not interested in just pursuing grant funding just to get the funding for the sake of getting a grant. But the last two applications, one being the Outfall, it was the only capital item that was shown out beyond 2025 in the sewer fund or any of our utility fund. And it was, we knew that that project was, is upcoming. And we know that it's a priority. And then a grant application was available where it aligns well with that project. So we had to take the opportunity. Same with the Act of Transportation Design Project for around Gospel Rock. I submitted that knowing full well that if we are successful, it's going to add to my workload. But being 100% grant funded and being part of the strategic priorities of council, it was, again, it's an opportunity that we couldn't pass up. So that's, will be the way that we'll operate moving forward is, unless we get directed otherwise by council, is that looking for grant opportunities where it aligns with our current capital needs, rather than trying to create an opportunity to get a grant just because we know there's a program out there. And then trying to fit a project to fit the grant. It's more, look at the grant, do we have something that was, is in our plan that we know that we need to complete, would align well with that? Then that's where it becomes worth the effort to prepare because it is a lot of work to go into a grant application. And there needs to be, the rationale needs to be there.
Yeah, and I think that's what we've been doing for some time now. I remember when the Director of Finance, early, in early months of being with us, kind of came forward and saying, bringing up a similar kind of thinking and that that's just of not, not applying for every grant that came forward. So, and yeah, I think it's a, it's a good point that's been brought up. But, you know, I do think that that's, that's been the understanding for this entire term. And we're seeing it as the Director of Infrastructure.
I can appreciate that. Thank you for the answers. All good. I'm just, it's, it was kind of this, it answered the question just because it's not even just applying for every grant, but the fact that the Outflow Grant was known for quite, you know what I mean? So you can budget it. It's just like, it would frustrate you or frustrate a council if we're expanding our projects so big that, and then next thing you know, each department's asking for, to hire more staff. And then next thing you know, you have this, you know, problem that some other municipalities have that, like, their wages or their administrative costs are so far, like, so much of their budgeted amount, which taxpayers hate to see. And we never see governments reducing. We just see them growing. So that's all. That was my question.
We've seen that very recently nearby. And also, I think, you know, I was just answering a question over the weekend about maybe an example that actually happened in the town was the grant we received for Pioneer Park. Someone was asking me about that, what's going on with Pioneer Park? And I said, well, that's kind of dead in the water, actually, because the grant that we received was not enough to actually pay for even the most basic costs of a washroom. So, I mean, it was great. We applied for that grant. But, and we had that money to maybe leverage other money that we would have needed to build washrooms, but it didn't, it didn't come through. So, I mean, maybe, maybe if we had some, a CAC that conveniently came at that time, right at the right time, and we actually got a check, neither one of those two things happened. Maybe, maybe we could have done it, but we couldn't. So that, that might be, you know, one example of a grant that wasn't, wasn't planned for.
You saw the Instagram post as a?
Yep, yep. And I replied to it and, you know, message back. Oh, really? Maybe I should apply, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there was a public, there was a public social media post asking about it. And I just did a reply. And I don't think it, my reply was public, so maybe I should, actually. Yeah, okay. But that's the, that's just one example of like, you know, a grant that came forward that we couldn't even make use of. And I know that happened to name it. District Seashell had that quite frequently in the last term as well. They're supplying for every grant they could find. Counselor Kroll.
Thank you, Mayor White. When you look at these figures and we've received grant money for them, and I know when projects, when we apply for grant funding, we build in a contingency factor. I'm just concerned that our contingency factor in the light of current inflation and fluctuation in prices and, you know, we were showing 91% grant funded. But do we have our bases covered?
Go ahead.
Through the Mayor White, there, one can only manage the manageable. So in this case, we're saying 91% of total project cost is coming from grants. What happens on the cost within each project is a separate matter. So I would say the outlook right now is no worse than it was, say, post-COVID and suddenly we had the supply chain shock. I can't see anything immediately impacting many of these projects. That said, the bigger the, the bigger the project, the more that infrastructure is involved in it, the more likely you face this quandary. And there's no way around it. When you get the big grants from the senior governments, they have you promise that you will make up any cost gaps that might arise. So.
Sir, you can only manage the manageable. Let's move on. I think that's the questions for this.
Mayor White, do you want me to continue on? There's a few sections that would probably take us to about one. I don't know if that works with the break plan or?
Perfect. I was going to stop us at noon. And it's noon, right? You can't even see the time, I don't think. But yeah, no, I was going to ask council where we could, we could break at 12:30 in half an hour. We could break at noon. Where are people at and where's people, staff to? No, no, just, I mean, we can, we can keep going, but a break at least. Yeah, not while 9:00 PM is when we have to, we have to do our, our vote for unanimous vote to stay on now. No, let's figure this out first, and then I'll go to you. But break at 12:30 or one, what were people expecting?
12:30 would be great.
Okay, so let's go to 12:30. And Counselor Thompson? Because I think that's what Heidi was ready for too. She said she was going to. And then it'll be a break and we'll come back in half an hour.
Okay, thank you. I'm through you, Mayor. I'm still on the general proposed capital projects list. And it's in regards to the DCCs noted. With that, because some of these are sitting in, when we look at the project delivery time period and there's a lot of, there's a few 2026, 2027s, is it fair to assume that that 1% might be reflected more positively as we move into those 2026, 2027? Or is that allocated in specific and not going to change?
Mayor White, it's the Director of Infrastructure who oversees the pools of DCC money and sorts out how to, I mean, at this point, it's in pencil. It's like, well, we have so much money there that's eligible. Okay, we have this project, if we get the grant funding, et cetera. That's probably going to be the call on the DCC money we have. But things change. New amounts get contributed faster than maybe we thought. Things might get rejigged. It's just having a plan. And if everything goes the way the assumptions align for this, then that's what will happen.
I'll go to the Director of Infrastructure.
Thank you. And through the mayor. So the DCC program identifies specific projects that are eligible. So just given the list of projects that are identified in here, I think the only one that has DCC funding as a contribution is the Act of Transportation Project for Gower Point Roads. That's really the only one of all of this, the work that's within here that would be included in that DCC program. So new projects added in future years would have a DCC contribute element to it. But there would be no change with the DCC rate increase. It just, that really just would be impacting the pool of reserves that would be available to draw from.
If there are no more questions on the project lists, we'll move to a, like the projects, a fairly significant section. It's the annual revenues list. So if you can picture that one-page summary sheet that we had before with all the revenue lines up top and all the expense items, yeah, page 15 of 55, this deals with an awful lot of the revenue line items, but in more detail. That's essentially where many of those revenue figures come from is in this annual revenue schedule, starting on page 18 of 55. So the first one up is general taxation. And every time you see an orange block, that is a figure that heads to the schedule. So in general taxation, right now, we have the current level of taxation of $4,334,264, which is made up of general usable funds and $598,000 for the RCMP. Then the lower half of page 18 are all the sort of in lieu-in-kind forms of taxation. And they, some $298,000, nothing significant changing there. Fortis was down quite a bit. And I think that's reflective of simply, in the most recent year, they did their calculation, less gas revenues for them means less 3% for the town. Turning to page 19. So we've got the general municipal taxation figure and other taxation taken care of. Now we look at general fees and charges, which become service charges and usual fees on the summary schedule. And these are all the things we charge money for. And it's broken up into the different core service areas, functions, departments. On page 19, the significant items of note are the pink coloring, admin cost recoveries. What is that all about? So in 2020, it's about the charges to the utility funds from the general fund for things the general fund has paid for, for the utilities. And in Budget 24, a total between administrative services and engineering, a total of $811,000 was charged over. And because we are running a tight budget, I have made sure that we are requiring another $811,000 in 2025 over from, from the utilities so that we don't open a hole up because of how we're doing our allocations. So we're on page 19 of 55. And what's, so in 2025, there are three levels of money or the way things have been charged. Instead of just one big $473,000, you'll see that at the top under Budget 2024. And then in engineering, $344,000, everything in one. Starting in 2025, we have all the labor time allocated that people will spend, well, on everything, but in particular on water and sewer. And those water sewer budgets just pick up their figure directly. Then we have a second layer of costs, which we see in here, like IT, offices, fleet, where in the general municipal fund, all of the costs are charged to deliver, to take care of it. And then we share off to other departments in the general fund and we share off pieces to utilities. So that's why we're getting revenue back. The last piece remaining, and that's being handled accounting wise differently this year, but the last piece of that money remaining is the $80,000s. It's a third piece, and it isn't about labor and it isn't about a direct sure of anything. What it is, is an indirect assessment. It's saying that of all the legislative and administrative costs, there's further value that the utilities need in their getting it, and it totals $160,000. And when you look at the total administrative and legislative service budget for '25, you'd calculate that, well, that's about 8%. Yeah, I can see how there are so many items listed here that aren't regular labor and aren't these limited pools of money allocated that should also be shared because there's value being received by utilities. That's what those $80,000 lines are. When this budget was first prepared, I didn't have them in there. But when I saw that we couldn't bear not to have that revenue, I put that remaining piece back. And the one other item on the sheet, there's, there's blue on it. I've, it's the building permit fees. So I mean, our actuals, $23,190,000, our actual, $24,290,000. The budget, I've just left the budget as it was in '24 at 315, which is optimistic. But it could work. And it didn't seem right to cut revenues back just because there's a lot of variability there. And the outlook right now doesn't look positive for a lot of new building permits in 2025, but you never know. And that's all I have on this sheet.
Questions? Counselor DeAndrati.
Thank you, Mayor. I look at the harbor, the revenue. So the first question is, why is it lower than '24? Also, when I look at the expenses. is it lower than 24? Also, when I look at the expenses for the harbor, we are pretty much, I think, getting $2,600 a month in revenue. So my question, is this the goal, to have a harbor that it just provides $2,600 in revenue a month?
So looking at page 19, if we go to the middle of that page, we have community services, and right underneath there, we've got harbor, marinas, oceanfront. Optimism, yes, business unit. We have one line item right now, and that is the marina lease. And the town is compensation, compensated for entirely on a concession basis. So there's no, like, base rent there. It's just calculated based on, on their revenues. And there is $190,000 coming in. That's, that's revenue. Council of Deandretti is quite correct, though, to naturally start, and that's part of the purpose of breaking things out, is if you've got your revenues here, you can flip over to the budget where the expenses are, and see what are our expenses being incurred to generate activities like this. Another reason why this block is so empty is because there's so much potential there, but nothing happening. And I think the strategic plan, that's in part what is driving it. So in time, maybe some numbers revenue-wise will start being added in here, because every year, staff and council are reminded that, oh, what, if you have the opportunity there, that if something could be a revenue activity or should be, we should be writing it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you could, if the director could answer this question, but I'm just wondering, with a, a size of our town, or the length of our foreshore, or the amount of marina that we have, is there any number that you could envision that we should be collecting? Or, or do we have any way of calculating, just based on maybe other municipalities with the same feature?
I would respond that council and staff have started work on this approach, and it's gonna be step by step. And it's, it is gonna take time.
And there's no cookie cutter. You can't look at municipality and say, hey, this is what we'll get.
Things will evolve over time. I mean, think of decades to get where, where you possibly could go. I mean, one of the things that, the way it was initially set up with the harbor authority is, it seems every effort was made to have it stand alone. But in recent times, it becomes clear that the town through council is responsible for the overall governance there, the, the membership of the board, and so on. And it doesn't take too many steps further, looking at the agreements, to say, ah, have we really got a regional harbor that financially should be incorporated into the town? I'm not suggesting that that's the case. I'm just saying it'll evolve these things.
Yeah, I think we're kind of getting, we might, I don't want to, we'll have lots of, we always have time to talk about strategic planning. I want to keep the focus on, on the budget. But it's obviously, you know, working with the harbor is something that we've got explicit in our strategic plan. So this might be a discussion for our next strategic planning session, which I think is already scheduled, if it isn't, if, you know. Councillor Lumley, though.
I agree. And that's, though, I was just gonna say that, but not that we want to put, you know, generate more revenue on it, specifically on our strategic plan, but I would love to, for council to, to put their heads together to find, because we, we had talked about charging to, for using mooring buoys with the Gibson's logo on them. And to the Director of Finance's point, like, our question was, how do you, how do you enforce, like, or how do you enforce payment? But to his point now, is, yeah, we should be using the, the Wharf, the people at the Wharf, who have access to boats and stuff, and can do a job for the town. And anyway, but I'd like to, I'd like to have that meeting, like, sooner than possible. I have some other ideas.
It's scheduled. It's booked.
Okay, good.
Yeah. I know, it's, it's very high on what our CAO has been, you know, on his, his agenda, what he's been working on. I think you're putting a lot of thought about, lots of discussions. And that's why, why we see it in the budget, even though there's nothing yet to report. It's, a lot of work has been going into this, so it'll be on our next, our next strategic planning agenda, for sure. Can we move on? Okay, Councillor Deandretti.
Thank you, Mayor. Disregard, I see, I see there's a gap of $32,000. And I understand the reasons for the expenditures, but my question, is there a way of recovering that? Or?
There are a lot of numbers here, so I don't know where, where it's with $32,000.
Oh, $32,000 is the difference between the revenue and the, and the expenses. The revenues is 357.7, and, and, sorry, the, yeah, the expenditure is 357.7, the revenue is 32.5. So there's a gap. So my question, because otherwise this year, the town...
I'm just, great, because I don't know what you're talking about. So I think, hopefully maybe our Director of Finance can help the rest of us.
Could I make a suggestion? I, I think we should add that one to the IT one. We're gonna end up at a section there, and that's a perfect time to pick it up again. It'll make sense for everyone.
I'm pretty sure you're going ahead in the agenda, because I don't, I don't see it on the page that we're, I'm on. So, what? Okay. I've got a different, I've got a different sheet. Okay, go, go ahead. We'll, we'll get to it.
Thank you. So we're moving on from page 19 and 55, but we're still looking at general fees and charges. And on, on page 20, there's a couple of items of note in blue under that 25 column.
Sorry, mic was off. Business license fees. I, I just wanted to flag that, you know, after, after the effort that went in in 2024 to revise the fee levels, the budget level there is now at $203,000, and Budget 24 was $155,000, and actual was $156,000 for 24, so there's been an improvement. And then down at the bottom, the total for total fees and charges. So it's $2,370,000. And this is one of the revenue items. Well, that's quite a bit less than 2024. But that's just because two of the three charges to utilities are being handled differently. So in effect, I, I, the way to look at 25 is it's slightly improved over 24, but no great change. Then finally, at the bottom of this page, is investment income. And a clarification is needed there, for sure. So you'll see Budget 24, $546,000. Budget 2025, $345,000. What happened? Well, nothing dramatic. The analysis there is about $70,000 in 24 actual, $70,585 was the general fund share, and it's budgeted to get $70,000 this year. And then that $275, just like those other numbers to the left, the 389 and the 113, they're just directly matched, we'll see shortly, on the reserve schedule. So it doesn't have any impact on our overall revenues or our need for municipal taxation, that there's been changes to those numbers. And I've just been more conservative, and also more hopeful that some of the money that we are, do have in hand, is going to go into projects and finally be spent this year. Because that will certainly drive down the amount of interest we earn. And we'll see that sheet shortly. So that's, if there are any questions on page 20? No. Let's go to page 21. 21 is all the government transfers and grants. And there's great variability every year in the, in the five years of columns, because it all depends on who's doing what projects and what grant funding came through. I guess on page 21 of 55, the highlights I see there are in the middle of the page, BC Housing Initiatives Fund, HIF, CMHC Housing Accelerator Fund, half. And then if you go down one more color, to a green one, BC Complete Communities Program, there's a significant amount of money that came in through senior government in aid of advancing housing, new housing units. And that's reflected in, in, certainly in our grants and the use of them. And without taking into that discussion, I'll just remind you for the half line, that that's the full extent, that staff has planned operating projects using that money. And there's still that other, roughly speaking, $2 million that has been set aside, and that's waiting more for, and you recall that discussion, where it's like, yep, there's some land opportunities, there's some projects we could do, and that'll be sorted out at a later time. It's not being sorted out in this budget. Nothing's been allocated to use that money yet. Other than it must be used. We've got a couple of years. Oh, and one, one change down near the bottom. It's a small one, but it's just, all the pieces have to fit together. You'll see RCMP, traffic fine sharing. You know, I'm making an assumption that the town is going to get a share, but every piece of information and history shows it should. And that's my best guess as to, like, how much that could be. But it's in the budget, and it fits all into that calculation of how much money has to come out of the RCMP reserve to basically plug its budget in the first few years. I don't have anything else to share on page 21. Moving on then to page 22, which continues that listing of grants. And again, there's a number of line items with nothing there. It's just flagging the potential that there could be now or in the future. There are some grants that I've seen elsewhere that are often or routinely applied for. I'm not sure whether we do. But by getting them into the budget workbook, which all of management will have a copy of when this is finished, it's a quick reference for things they might want to do. I mean, I'll just toss out one example. BC Hydro is rolling out a small trees grant every year. As long as you've got a tree plan, and you've got a plan, then it makes sense to go and help yourself, because it's a pretty straightforward thing. Apply online, send your receipts, get the money. It's, it's that straightforward. Page 22. So in the end, you'll see the total, and the orange is just flagging, you know, that you can find the $1,590,300 back over on page 15. You know, it's one of the line items there. Everywhere with this backup information, that orange is, that's your link back to the summary schedule. Last things on page 22 to quickly touch on, even though it's for capital purposes, into revenue goes the gas tax, the Canada Community Works money for $280,000. So that's just to keep the accountants happy, but you, at least you know where it's going. It goes into revenues. And when you see the reserve page, you'll see it then yanked out and put into capital reserves, so that we don't spend it on operating expenses. But at least it's there. And, and down the bottom, there are some transfers from the operating reserve account, which used to have an old name, which I won't use, small amounts coming out to fund projects. Any questions on page 22? But wait, there's more. Page 23. The last, the last page of the revenues list. I did say earlier, to do with surplus and so on, that there was a bit of a challenge. This is the very specific part of it. So I did want to go through transfers from surplus unrestricted with you, just to be sure that you're aware of the situation and what we're up to. So the 2024 year-end unrestricted surplus, no calls on it, no claims by anybody, $876,653. That does not include any of the RCMP money that's saved separately. And based on how the town has been handling several items, it's going down. But I continue the methodology here, but with proposal to gradually dig our way out from it. So the first one is actually great news. The GDEU, the fantastic utility that it was, but is no more, has its last debt payment this year. It's happened for $57,500, and it's being paid out of the surplus. I think you may recall that, yep, that's been the case for a number of years. Great. The next one up is, last year was dismarked as a HR $10,000 gap. But when we actually went to the admin budget and put all the things that need to be in it, it's like, whoa, we have a budget gap of 50. And we have no obvious revenue increases. And not wanting to necessarily strain municipal taxes for fixing budget gaps, what you see here is, okay, well, we'll take $50,000 out of surplus to plug that HR revenue gap in 25, and then 40, and then 30, and 20, and 10. Meanwhile, over in the HR budget, it's just 50, 50, 50, 50. So what's happening is, starting in 26, $10,000 a year is being added, or being funded by municipal taxes. And over five years, we fix it as smoothly as we can. Okay. And then another line item like that, it's in the drainage service. So we do a lot of watershed monitoring. It started off at $50,000. It's now $65,000 a year, throw approximately $5,000 for White Tower, annual monitoring for some unforeseeable time, but like, not just one or two years. And you're, you're more in the $75,000 neighborhood. So the same thing is happening there. We're not using municipal taxes to pay for it, which we should be. We're using surplus to pay for it, this unrestricted surplus. So this revenue line shows that that need is being reduced at the rate of $15,000 a year, starting in 2026. So that eventually, that drainage budget will be fully funded, as it should be, for a regular operating expense. But I did want to make sure that you are aware of, not only that's how we've been handling some of these items previously, because there's so many things to remember about our budgets, but also that it's acceptable to you that we proceed to do this for the next five years for these items.
Councillor Lumley?
Yeah. So just a question, I guess, a general question through the mayor. Would you, your, would your advice be that, that this surplus, okay, so I have two questions. If we have a surplus, we get to use that money on anything. Because I know some funds are restricted to certain things, but surplus is, whoever needs that money gets to take that money? That's the first question.
Yes.
Okay.
Council can spend it for any purpose.
So my second question is, do you, is it your advice to council that we at least repay this amount of money? Or at least create even more surplus based on transfers that you foresee? Like, if, if these future transfers, I know we're dealing with 2025, but say, some of these things run out, and then you're suggesting 40, 60, is this, is, these are, these are monies that we have to make through taxation, right? If not more, that would be your suggestion? If you think it, if it's at $870,000, but it should be at $2 million, are we, part of our budget process is creating a surplus, hopefully, each, each, every annual year? And is it more than what you've budgeted here? Or is that increasing the $870,000? I hope that makes sense.
Through Mayor White, there's no doubt that this proposal will continue to grind down the $876,000. It will go down lower. To the extent that we have some slack within the existing budget, and, and there are some monies left over across all of departments at year end, that will substantially offset this. So, again, so many details for everyone to remember. But in 2024, when we were getting near the end of the year, and we were looking at that slack amount, we were looking at it specifically in order to complete 494. So we used a great deal of the money that might have flowed through to the bottom for this, for this purpose. So it's... So it's, so it's been tough, but ideally, every year, we'd have a couple of hundred thousand surplus in the operating fund. And maybe over the next five years, well, we'll, the council should monitor it, monitor that we're slowly stopping taking any more out of unrestricted surplus and we're starting to put it back. And then over the next 10, 20 years, it can work its way back to 2 million. But it's, it's going to take a while.
Yeah, we're at 12:30. So follow up, but I also just want to check too. The, the debt and reserves are kind of related to what we were just talking about. So do you think we can power through that and then break? Does that make sense? Okay, I'll go to Counselor Lumley first.
Yeah, just, should there be a stopgap then, like created? Where, because I don't know, people have discretion at spending and so on, so forth. But if you go into use surplus, does every dollar from surplus have to be approved by council? And if it isn't, then should there be a, a line drawn in the sand where you go, okay, you guys cannot spend more than this much on surplus without coming to council? With a really good excuse? Because if we have to build it up without any restrictions on spending it, it, it seems like it's going to be a real challenge.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I, I have to, I'm not sure what the practice has been. I mean, we've, it's been comfortable. I know that, that often the surplus is used just to balance things, but if something new comes forward, I, I know that, you know, the former finance or the finance director would come to us and say, here's a new project that we could spend some surplus on. But yeah, is it, would, will there be kind of a more formal? Or like with a, with a, with a certain threshold going forward? Is that a best practice even?
Well, yeah, best practice. I, I guess the, the starting point is the annual check of the situation, which we're, we're doing right now. And what we're seeing right now is, okay, we shouldn't have expectations any better than the, that perhaps we can see this stop. But that, that requires council and staff to understand that when we're running projects through the year, we can't get to the end of the year and just assume we can use the surplus, even if it's a valid project, because we have needs for it to flow through and start rebuilding surplus. So that, that would be a, a best practice. But that one's easy to say and hard to do when you've got a million dollar project, say, and you're 750,000 into it and you only need another 60,000 in extra spending money from surplus to make it happen, most people are going to say yes. I'll, I'll finish with the, the, the end part would be when, when, when the town, which is not this year, when the town is in a position where the demands for revenues from RCMP transition from having a relatively lower municipal share of total revenue than it probably should have for a town this size. Well, let's just say the RCMP situation is resolved. The transitions coming out of the United States are more clear. There, you may be looking at a budget where the budget says, ah, it needs 6% and you may be willing at that time to start when we're saying, okay, well, we're increasing that this year 1%. We're keeping that 1% and that 1% can't be given away for anything else and it has to go to surplus. But I think it's a process and I doubt we'll see it for at least three years.
Yeah, makes sense. So let's, let's run through the next two pages here of debt and reserves because they're, they're connected to this, I feel, and then we can take a break and get to the expenditures.
Yeah. Page 24, 25, debt. And the takeaways I have for you on this one is down on the bottom, as mentioned, GDEU.
Yep.
The debt is paid off at the end of '25. That's great. And then if you go in the middle where the color is, you have a new one starting. So that's the general fund share of Skyline Road Paving, 555,000. That money is being closed. We have two new debt issues is being closed in April. MFA has been very quiet. I can't think of it's like for them, a terrible time to be having to get all of this money for local governments because the debt markets have been going all over the place. And well, I guess that's the right time to quickly comment on this. So the MFA has its own credit rating, independent of BC, independent of Canada. But of course, how Canada's doing and how BC is doing, of course, is going to impact on how credit raters are going to view them. But they, they do have a very unique structure and a product and so many clever ways of lowering the risk for lenders that I don't see that there's any imminent risk of their issuing debt for local government in BC costing anymore. But it's like everyone else, they have to go out in the markets and get the money. And right now in the markets, things had, were settling down on short-term rates pretty much all the way through '24 and people assumed some more lowering of rates in '25. Now we're starting to contemplate, oh, maybe short-term rates are just going to stay where they are for a while. More to the point though, for the longer term debt that we borrow for the town. The US market takes the lead and it had been, you know, down below the 4% level not that long ago. And now it's around the 5% level and that has huge impacts on the cost of the money. So the US government is, at least from the president's side, is taking actions to at least stop the long-term US rates going any higher. But it's tricky and it will probably take a year for that to settle back down. So using that as a, and it's a very poor equivalent benchmark, but for the longest debt that MFA serves up, rates are probably very quickly moving in that direction. If you look at the sheet, which was the last takeaway I wanted to share, under the, the first and the third item, at the, let's just go to the very top line and it reads, Jan. Debt, MFA Issue 133, matures 2031, current interest rate 2.41. And this has got a reset 2026. So part of the risk work that MFA does on behalf of lenders, it says, don't worry, you won't get stuck with a, a rate that's lousy. We're going to agree that the rates can reset every five years on issues. So let's hope that everything settles down. Long before '26 and '28 is the third debt down because it's at 3.15. We would like to reset for roughly the same interest rate. Because if you look at those two debts and run your eyes along the interest line, there's about 110,000 in interest a year between the two of them. And if the interest rate doubled, we'd be looking at paying interest of almost 200,000. So that's, that's our debt situation. We have some exposure. But the good news is we have plenty of time before we get there. And I expect by then, things will have settled down a lot. Any questions on debt?
Reserves. Such better reserves.
Reserves. Over to page 25 of 55. Wow, these pages are just flying by. Highlights on this one. It's a little more complicated. So on the top left, we've got transfer to operating reserves. And then down in the middle, we've got transfer to capital reserves. So just keep that in mind. And going back to transfer to operating reserves, the one big figure of interest is the RCMP operating reserve account. And you can see that yes, the 598,870 went off to reserve in '24 and so will the 598,000 in '25 and the 680,000 in 2026. And then no longer will money be going to reserve because we'll be taking money out of the RCMP operating reserve account. Other than that, there's nothing strange going on there. Okay, I do have to admit to one thing. There's a green one up near council. So it's just a small gap, but there's running the elections. And then there's usually some kind of orientation session. And there's always these days a strategic plan afterwards. So all of those three things need to be budgeted. And I, I think the figure is truer to a cost of 20,000 a year to, to do that. So I've just put that in there.
And this is as opposed to like a one year in the past it would have been in, in 2026, we'd suddenly have.
We certainly had a line item for 10,000 a year, but it was just denoting election. And it's just awkward to, yeah, get there at the last minute and you run a tight budget. And it's like, well, I don't have 40,000 ready to go. Or if I use the one place we do, if anything else crops up that we need to consult and on, again, I'm stumped. And then we run back into the, okay, we'll take it out of surplus. And suddenly we are spending our emergency money. Lower half of that sheet. A couple of kind of standard items. We've got a transfer to fleet and equipment replacement at 240,000 and that's considered with prior years. And when we see that page, we'll see, oh, that's part of the total that's being shared cost-wise across all of the departments. There was always this parks playground, 5,000, so we just kept that. Okay, in the tan color, I'm just making a point here that for asset management, and this point was made before in earlier staff reports to council. You'll recall the kind of review report from this fall that maybe more capital money needed to be going into buildings and parks and so on. Well, if you have some tax room, maybe that's the case, but this year the town doesn't. So it's not a good time to start. But it's just leaving it here so we can all see there's, there's no transfer to buildings and amenities. There's no separate transfer to roads and sidewalks. I would expect that the town would have those capital reserve funds. What we do have is we have a general capital reserve. And at one point, council started that with a 1% of municipal taxes to go in here. And that's still happening. There it is at 40,000 a year. But I imagine that should be ramped up in time to more like 5%. But the town doesn't have to do it today. It's just getting it organized and gradually transitioning it in. Finally, at the bottom, there's the gas tax going into reserve at 280,000. And then finally, projected share of net interest earnings, which exactly offsets on the other side. So for example, if we earned $500,000 on our capital reserve funds in 2025, at year end '25, we'll be sending 500,000 here. The number will change, but it's definitely destined to come over here. And I should, just like the surplus having been ground down so much, I think it's important to point out that, okay, if that 841,000 we're sending to capital reserve funds, what this sheet is basically saying is that, well, 280,000 of that is a grant we're getting from senior government. 280,000 and 275,000 is interest on our own capital reserve fund money that we already have. So like, where are we giving? And we're giving the 41 and the 5 and the 240. So that's the situation. It's fixable with time. Are there any questions on reserves?
Seeing none, we're going to break. We'll, we'll come back at, we were going to come back at 1 o'clock. We're, we're a few minutes, we're 13 minutes over. Do we want to do 1:15 or with one? We'll, we'll try for one. Yeah, yeah. Let's go for one. Let's, let's stay with one because I, I've got meetings after too.
While we're making excellent progress, we're not going to be faster than the amount of time we spent so far.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, so I'd say we're going to be more than what we've just spent. But it, it's so much as contingent on how many things council needs in terms of information and questions. I think the expense sections are, are fairly straightforward, but that's easy to say when you've been staring at them for weeks. If you've just got it, it's like.
like. Thank you, Mayor White. So yes, the, just again to reiterate that back on page 15 of 55, that summary schedule, all the light items for the departments, link to the orange boxes on these various sections, and how that's how it rolls forward into the total. So the first one up is council and legislative services. So a couple of changes, we have the traditional council block, and come to join up with them are legislative service support. If you look at the total for council in '25 is 313,000, and 301,000 for support in terms of direct and indirect costs to deliver services, that's a pretty normal match. So I believe the reallocation of costs and so on worked well there. One of the drivers for this was one of the senior staff members was just really concerned that legislative services is not the same as corporate services. There's a whole range of different activities and different costs. And on reflection, I realized that she was right, and hence, this is a much better representation of how much it costs to run this area. A couple of small items, I know council's sensitive to bumps, the compensation, indemnities, same. With payroll, taxes, and benefits, for some reason, we didn't have the benefit piece in there previously, so that's the only reason it's gone up. And where was the benefit cost share for council? It was part of a big lump of benefits sitting elsewhere in general government. So we've just put it, we're already paying it, but we've just put it where it's supposed to be. I note here, the third line, there's a little gap. That's just something I have to follow up with my responsibilities. I'm used to seeing a small insurance policy that doesn't cost very much, and I haven't seen it yet, but that might be because we're doing our benefits through UBCM. I just have to make sure that we have it. There were other couple of notes noting gaps. So council's budget is very, very tight. It provides itself a 2,000 contingency, everywhere else 5. And I'm not suggesting you change anything, I just want you to be aware. Usually, there's a couple of thousand in case some unexpected advertising or media has to happen. And often these days, these budgets now have a 10,000 amount, and it's money that council has in working with their CAO for all kinds of possible reasons, which isn't here. And again, because the budget's so tight, I've just left the greens, and it's just my way of suggesting you might wish in the future to consider changing that when there's more money available.
Well, I see it's showing that it goes up back up to 5,000, right? After the green.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm not finding it.
Okay.
Not to worry.
I just see 2026, 2027, 2028, they're all 5,000 instead of 2,000.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Well, that's probably, I did that, and then I said, oh, but council hasn't said they want that changed. I just forgot to go back and make them all 2,000
twenty twenty-three and part of it was, yeah, we were just trying to find some savings, but I think there was a, there was like a need, but we found it somewhere else. I mean, there's just other, I remember working with Nony on it, finding like there was, there's sometimes things come up, like there was a Squamish Nation visit in the summer, which we should probably allocate for all the time because it seems to be every summer, but we found that money elsewhere. That's like, those are the kind of things that, that come up.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll need it, maybe we won't, we'll just, we'll make that decision then next year, I guess, if it's possibly going up to five thousand or not.
Are there any questions on? This? Okay. Next one up is a big block and it's also gone through some changes. Advertising services. So basically, this is, was mostly what once was called general government. So it's now broken into functions. Communications has its own section.
Administrative services, just.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, page twenty-seven of fifty-five. Communications has its own section, corporate has its own section, page twenty-eight, finance has its own section, human resources has its own section, page twenty-nine, IT has its own section, page thirty, purchasing, risk have their own sections and town hall. This was broken out, as I mentioned earlier, because it's, it's difficult for people to manage the earth they're responsible for if they can't see what we've got available for them, exactly what their resources are. And at the same time, it also makes it clear where like, oh, this, this area has lots of resources, therefore expectation should be high for what they can do versus if you look at risk and purchasing, okay, there are some people who show up and do a little bit of work once a year and that's what we've got. Okay, we shouldn't expect amazing things out of those functions. So if I may start at the top, communications and I know there's lots of colors, but I, I use them the same way over and over, so maybe we'll just look there. The first little block is all about compensation and it would appear quite low and that's definitely not what our communications person makes because her position is spread all over all the core services and that's just sort of, if you might, might think of it as like, that's the administrative time remaining of things that this person does, such as, I don't know, general oversight of the website. The next little block is you have people these days, you need information technology and this is referring to communications in terms of phones and such. And there's the money available there. Previously, it was just all lumped together, but it's like, okay, well, we only have one person in communications, those numbers look about right. The next section up, which is some, some blocks in some places are more expanded than others, so there's a lot of important fees due and subscriptions that go on and even within staff, there'll have to be some discussions about as we implement them, but for example, making sure that you're paying your licensing fees for your domains and so on is really important. Training and travel, all the staff members need some of that. And then here we have a small change, so contract services contingency, and that's the contingency exactly as the mayor was mentioning. There's some very fundamental thing that comes up, you're not sure it's always going to happen, but you need some money there for it, they're not frivolous activities. So for example, right now, we're in the second year of updating the website and if you can get to the website often and do lots of updates rather than waiting until five, six, seven years in and everyone thinks it's terrible and we have to rebuild the whole site, it's better to keep upgrading and working on it all the time. But in order for the communications person to do that, they have to know in their budget, they've got a small chunk of money that they can pick pieces of the website or something else like it and be able to get on and do the work. And that's blue because it came off a small amount of contingency that the CAO had. But, but the CAO had been helping out communications often, so I thought that might be fine. Contract services, website, host, materials and supplies, advertising, there it is. I didn't note anything unusual in communications. Corporate, same block up top, there's a lot of people working in there, a lot of their time is being allocated elsewhere, but still they have a lot of activities that tend to keep them close to home, so there's still a sizable amount of money there. There's their share of IT and I keep referring to these as TOG base and what I mean by that is the basics, internet service, phones, oh, you have a computer, that's nice, you've got Microsoft loaded on it with all of its applications, all the base things that everyone has versus almost every department has some specialty local government application that they use or an accounting, we have an accounting package. So that's what the specialty things are each time they keep showing up. So for example, Zoom diligent, other things are the specialty items for corporate services. And then there's a share of rent, four seventy-four here and their records section of four ninety-four, the various membership stuff have, is the next block up, LGMA, three people and so on. Training and travel, this, this function normally accumulates stuff that for a bunch of people, but it's all, usually calls out CAO for a variety of things. So there's the CAO's training and travel, there's the training and travel for two manager level people, two clerks, and then on into office supplies, postage delivery and so on. Contract services contingency was forty-five thousand, fifteen's gone to HR and five has gone to communications, leaving twenty-five, which, okay, it's low, but I've seen that number before. If the CAO really needed more money than that, something serious has come up and it will be a discussion of where to find it in the budget. But that's in the meantime, hey, some money to do something that just comes up. Legal services, kept the budget at sixty, I mean, that is a standard number I've seen in other places for legal and as we all know, you know, just look at the actual, actual eighty, twenty-three, eighty-eight thousand, actual twenty-four, thirty-six, the legal account can be all over the place. Hopefully, things are going well and therefore it stays lower. Are there any questions on corporate?
Okay.
Who do you want me to look at? I'm gonna look at you.
Just.
Okay, just for budgeting purposes, I'm wondering, you've, we've, we've allocated all these amounts to their different accounts and then the unaudited actual is forty-four seventy-five, but even though you've allocated out to certain amounts and it's left the corporate with a contingency of twenty-five, why wouldn't you, if the actual's around four, why would the budget be twenty-five thousand?
Yes, this is a great example. So there was fifteen thousand of HR sitting in that, on top of that forty-four seventy-five actual there where everything had just been lumped together. So we, we moved the, the expenditures using the forty-five thousand, which we pretty much spent, to those departments. And when we see HR shortly, I'll show you there as an example.
Okay.
Okay. Page twenty-eight of fifty-five, finance. Oh, let's just gloss over this one. There is a fair amount of finance shared around, but still a lot of people staying close to doing standard administrative things in the department. Those are the figures up top. And there's a lot of items getting picked up, so its share of just base IT is eleven thousand, six hundred. It has a core accounting application that costs about thirty thousand, it has caseware thirty, it has some other specialty software, I'm trying to switch out of one and make money available otherwise, but I haven't quite succeeded yet. So still need that money. And then its share of the office space, seventeen thousand. Memberships, we have two instead of one, so that's gone up a bit. Training and travel has gone up a lot, I don't know, a lot of, I mean, we have five people working there. We should be spending something close to ten or people just aren't staying up to date. There's a contingency amount that's being put here. Just to be straightforward, I've, I've, I've never had a finance department that didn't have a fifteen. Sometimes it gets spent, but not necessarily. This would be a good example of, okay, managers are not supposed to be spending stuff they don't need to spend of this nature and we're counting on that because that's some of the stuff that's supposed to flow through to the bottom and make its way to our surplus. In, in the case this year is we have a new person joining finance, not yet, and we have an overlap with the managers, old manager, new manager. So for that new person money, that's paying a substantial chunk of having two here at the same time and then we're going to use up a chunk of that fifteen thousand to make the budget work. That'd be an example of, well, what did, what would you use it for this year? And it's like, well, that's what we've used it for. Contract services, this is the audit, I've just tracked on something similar to last year, I'm not sure, we're probably going to come in much higher than forty this year. It was a new accounting rule and our auditors were very enthusiastic helping us sort that out and I expect to, you know, I, well, expect, I won't be surprised that there'll be an extra bill for that. Materials and supplies, another one that's missing, sometimes things come up and you need the money, other times not, bank charges, other. Yeah. It, it, it is a lot more when you start allocating all the things over there. Human resources then. This was a budget with a lot of gaps, which this budget draft basically fixes. So there is some allocation of, of people, time to other departments here, so that's just the balance remaining. IT base specialty, software or service, memberships, training, travel, material supplies, okay, things that have changed. So previously, if some of the following items had come up, I guess either people went over to the CAO's forty-five thousand or tried, I mean, a solution was somehow found, but really there should be ten thousand for organization-wide training, which comes from a range of, WorkSafe says you must do harassment training or whatever it's called, every fifteen years and you have to cover the whole organization and be able to prove that that was done. Over to the other side of, maybe things just aren't going well in some services, core services, and it turns out that, well, it's not the people working there and it's not necessarily the managers, but it's how everyone's working together that isn't great and they're not going to resolve it and, you know, we've got some people leaving that shouldn't have left and all of these kinds of things. It might be a, a time where you say, okay, we do have this great outside coach, their local government, they worked in whatever that service function was and they come in and basically talk with everyone and coach them to be functional and ideally happy together and then go. And as you know, like losing two people who are really good at doing something in one of these small departments is just a horrible outcome. It takes us forever to replace them and we don't necessarily get people who are going to be as good as they were. They may bring some other skills, but it might be quite a while before we're doing that well. So it's to have the money available to do it. It's also a protection for the community because management doesn't have this excuse not to get on and address these things because I have no money. Well, here, now you've got the tools, please look after it. But it, it does cost and it's another example, but I know that maybe five thousand might flow through to surplus every year. The next one up, well, apparently this was somewhere in the budget, I never found it, but it's a pretty straightforward one, it's mostly involves the exempt. So people get higher skills, they finish programs or just simply they started out as like, oh, you are a new director, new to it, now you're like starting to be experienced, now like you're a superstar. It's having the money to pay them a bit extra separate from like cost of living increase was two point seven percent. Everyone gets that. So I know that about ten thousand has been used in, in, in twenty-five in bumps, I'm just calling it out so that like it's not hidden anymore. An employee recognition program, I mean, we spend millions on our employee group a year and again, it was like, I think that thousand over there looks like it might be an employee recognition program, but it's just the HR person's responsibility along with everything else to work, to put together a number of things, whether it's the T-shirts or the barbecues or whatever it is, to advance a positive culture and get different people from different departments and management and collective agreement people together more often. If that will just keep one person here who's good longer for a year, that's worth it. So that's what's there. These are shameless plugs for me, but they were requested by our HR manager and I have seen all of this once elsewhere. Employee health wellness, well, that's the program, you know, there's a whole variety of activities you could do that you'll get reimbursed for and that seems to work well. Contract services contingency, there is the sixteen thousand that was spent of the forty-five last year and there's fifteen being put in there because there is something serious to work on in that area every year and yet again, it's another example of, well, if you didn't, the surplus won't mind having the money. But you gotta, you gotta spend these money on necessary things. Checkmate, the next item, is a standard and that's really the one that's just following up on people who are working alone and check, checking in and making sure they're safe. That's how much that one costs. We've called out the recruitment block up, up more clearly. So the contract services, there's at least starter money for working with recruiters. There's the general advertising for all recruitments and then there's a periodic interview and not periodic, almost often standard relocation expenses. So now it's, it's all called out there. You'll recall earlier when we were over looking at surplus, that this was one of the items that had been partly paid for, starting at least last year and maybe prior years. And so a full seventy thou, no, sorry, a full fifty thousand dollars was being taken out of surplus in twenty-five to plug all these gaps and then it was going to go down forty, thirty, twenty, ten, as we gradually got it from municipal taxes. Are there, I'll, I'll stop here because there's been quite a bit.
Thank you. The IT, M I S bundle, caseware, this, are these just programs that you buy every five years or this is, these are kind of an ongoing subscription?
May I do that in the IT section, which is right on the next page?
IT's coming soon. Everyone cannot wait. Let's go to it.
Okay. IT, it's page twenty-nine of fifty-five. So we've done our best to, to break this out. If you look at, for example, twenty-three, in the middle of the page, budget twenty-two four, there is almost all of our IT and a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So when you see these comparison figures, we've gone back and we've backtracked and put them in there so that we would have, well, more comparison information, but let's look at the budget twenty-five column and what's in there. So there's some of paraminally time for one. primarily time for one, from one person working on I T, one of our staff members. I, I don't think we've shared any other time there. And now we get into monies we're spending on. So the base Microsoft package, think Windows, Office, SharePoint. That's what we have. It's all subscription, so much per month. Our outsourced provider has made that arrangement for us. So we get local government pricing and on top of that, we get some benefit from their bulk pricing. And that's how it's done. Obviously, they get some benefit too from all their clients, all doing their subscriptions through them. But we, we pay forty-seven thousand a year to Microsoft for all the computers we have using their software. We spend nine thousand a year with Adobe. That's some people not, well, some, a handful of people might have the full package here. I, I can't tell you how many, but nine thousand's going there for, for their product. Then I didn't disclose exactly what we've got, but we've got a pretty comprehensive security package. It's more than, more than one software working together. Again, through our supplier, Cloud Nine, seventeen thousand. Then all the stuff to coordinate the service and most particularly the backups of our Information Five Thousand, that's another company. But again, I just left the name off here. The base allowance for turning over our hardware, thirty thousand. And you can see from the actuals, well, that seems to go all over the map. One year it's thirty-eight thousand, the next year it's fourteen. I think it all depends on, well, I think it's been somewhat of a challenge for the people looking after this to fully understand what budget we have. So, and also calls on their time for multiple activities. It depends on how, dictates how much time is left to actually work on I T projects. But my understanding is we are doing a good job of rolling things over as things age out, they get replaced. Then in here, we have base copier equipment. Of course, all of these big copiers are the printers and scanners and all the things that we need in I T. We just bumped that up a little bit because we expect there to be one at four ninety-four. And I'll come back to this contingency line. So out of that one nine ninety-eight, if we move over to the right and see fifty-six thousand, that's actually what Cloud Nine gets. They get fifty. And there are six there for some unexpected task that they have to work on to fix something for us that might be more complicated. Which I have to say, when I saw that number, it was like, oh, my God, you guys are, they're worth their weight in gold for that, what they're doing. Because I've been at two other places recently with outsourced and one money-wise was a complete disaster. So like us and think two hundred thousand dollars, most of it wasted a year. And a replacement, which I think got them down to the hundred thousand dollar level. And it was much better service, but still troubling. So yeah, they, they, they're doing a good job to coordinate everything from afar and provide service here in person once a week. Equipment lease. Remember what this is, but this is four ninety-four. Sorry, it just, I can't, I'm looking up back up at base copy equipment and down here, I can't remember what that is, but I know it's legit. Next line, telephone and internet, no, no big changes there. There are some other, again, trying to set this up the first time, there's still phones and cell plans and other stuff in other parts of the budget, but it would just wasn't possible to comb it all and get it in one place. And then there's our cyber insurance. And it's, the line's just there. So at least you can see, okay, we have, we have a policy. So coming back to the forty-five, so this budget has a contingency in it. And in this year, probably half of that will be used to sort out whether they need to be, well, yeah, probably there needs to be a, an, an update on the I T in finance and also our mapping for development, but more than just development services relies on it. The suppliers there are going through transition and we basically have to change up. We probably have to change software up in both departments. So when they're installed, both of them are more expensive, but still not perfect. And in the meantime, we need specialists to help us get there. So that's what that forty-five is about. It came, it was the leftover money from this budget. Nobody said, oh, I must have forty-five in this I T budget to survive. But they definitely need money there on an ongoing basis for these things. And I suspect what will happen is consultants will eat twenty-two-five. And then we'll have hu- higher I T costs in finance and development going forward, which will just mean a lot of that forty-five has moved somewhere else and we may have to reset up a smaller amount. So bottom half of this, you, in the middle of the page, we have this long total of, well, okay, there's all of our expenses there. And then down in the bottom, we share it around. So less cost sharing allocations. On the left, we have all the core services. And we show here that we have over allocated by three hundred and thirty dollars, but that's fine in the course of a budget. And we've shared it reasonably around everywhere. And that is the end of the I T budget. Are there any questions on I T now? Stop, stop, he said.
I think he responded because I think my curiosity is if the, some of the programs were just a one-time or a subscription. You mentioned that it was a lot of subscription and eventually there's also new programming coming, right?
I'm going to go to the C A O for this.
Just through you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things I want to point out is with this, a lot of this money on particularly on the side of risk, we actually require to have training from our insurance association, that we have to have online training to make sure we avoid causing very costly risks that would come with accessing information and so on. So I want to just highlight that that cost keeps going up and is not really an option that we, eh, don't train, don't get insurance and these backups and for the most part, it'd be pretty hard to operate. This is probably the, some of the best money we spend, three hundred grand on, on I T in general for all of these reasons as well.
And, and if I could add on to the C A O, it's an example of something that's an organization-wide training. And the money to do it comes out of that organization ten thousand dollar, organization-wide training that you saw back in the H R function.
Are you ready, Counsel Lumley, or have your, or your questions been answered? Yeah?
Mine, mine was purely like the, the line item, the information technology function, the two eighty-eight that appears as a line item. But then the allocations to, I'm going back a few pages, but the allocations going to human resources and finance department are added to their lines as well. I just wasn't, I just wasn't sure because it says I T, say eighty-four thousand to finance, but then you still have the, but I just, I, I figured it out through your, through your presentation. So that was all. So it's all good.
Page thirty. Last section. So purchasing, there's a small staff allocation. We are a member of B C S P I, Social Procurement Initiative. We have work to do in that area, but that's what we've got right now. Risk, same thing. Key party to be a member of M I A B C. And then there's a little bit more in this one. The first line item there, oh, sorry, the first line item is liability insurance. And as you can see in twenty-two-five, there wasn't much left to allocate. It's, it's all being shared around. And then the last item is we have ten thousand dollar deductibles on our property and liability insurance policies. So when when we have to make good on gaps, this is where we charge it to. And town hall. Not, the only, the only change there of note is that, okay, great, we've allocated, it's going to cost eighty-eight thousand in twenty-two-five and we've shared eighty-eight thousand elsewhere. And that is, whoa, we almost missed the exciting part. On page thirty-one, we have the listed operating projects. And this one bears some quick discussion just to make sure you're aware of it. So there are a number of things going on administrative services that are very project-like, but if you look in the twenty-five column, a lot of it just says base, which means, hey, we're not providing additional money. We appreciate that this is going on and it takes time. But but good for you. We've already, no, that's, so this box in the middle with color, H R, compensation grid shift to local government, P fifty cumulative money. So Council approved that for three years, H R could have fifty thousand dollars to selectively increase different non-exempt positions to get us more or less at P fifty for everyone. So the labor figures in the budget across all these departments and so on has that fifty. And I, I believe those adjustments were really well received. And I know in, in one case, the person was just being overwhelmed by a job offer elsewhere and that just ended the matter when they got an adjustment, not to where the job offer was, but fairly close. But we need another fifty thousand in a year or two to do it. And I ended up treating this as a project so that it would be disclosed. And of course, once you spend fifty thousand in twenty-two-six and make it permanently part of your operating budget, you're going to spend the same fifty every year thereafter. That's what that's about. And then twenty-seven is the last fifty percent increment or fifty percent, fifty thousand increment. And hopefully, P fifty is achieved and we're in good shape that way. But that's how it's presented. Are there any questions then on administrative services before we move on? And that was the big one. No, okay. Development services is pretty straightforward. It's got a planning section. We've always had a planning section. It's got a building inspection section. We've always had that. It's picked up all the engineering office and senior management talent in, under engineering and in brackets, infrastructure services. We've got a total before operating projects. And then we've got a lot of big listed operating projects for all of this team. And now in this one, you can see how it's spread out over a few years. In terms of changes, it's followed exactly the same methodology as elsewhere. Planning of note is, and this not, is not always common, planning has its own legal budget and it's working with what it has and that seems to be doing just fine. And it was a little bit confusing to sort out what was going on with their contract services contingency other. So I just, it could have been five or ten. I, I just put ten, we'll see. There's nothing else of nothing unusual in building inspection. Then in engineering, there is a bit of a challenge there. And again, I elected more on the optimism. So this is an expensive piece. Over recent years, what I've learned working elsewhere is that it's not enough just to give engineering sixty, seventy thousand and they're supposed to make that work for, let me backtrack a bit. We have all of these projects that engineering does. And most of those big projects in infrastructure have lots of money. And while it doesn't pay for the staff time, it pays for all the engineering. But before we get to all of those projects, there is sewer, water, drainage, roads, parks, buildings, all kinds of other things to worry about. And many, many, for many, many years, most governments this size had sixty or seventy thousand and it was supposed to accommodate it all, but it, it hasn't worked for a long time. And you can even see there like the balance, a hundred and ten thousand spent in twenty-two-three. So you fix that, starting with saying, okay, over in water and sewer, I provide you sixty thousand not to be spent if not needed. But if you need to go do some serious engineering or you just need to get a nice report, twenty-five thousand help on writing a big grant application five, there's your money. You don't have to come to council and ask for it, but you know, make sure we do these things professionally and we win the grants. Or other more serious things can happen mechanically, say at the wastewater treatment plant. So the utilities are taken care of. And drainage, we'll see at the end of this is fully spoken for the money, but is well taken care of. So the issue then left is, okay, how much should be back here? So it's been, it once had a budget of forty-five, so currently it's got, it's showing a budget of fifty-five, but it actually gave up five thousand in blue just below the line. I forgot. It's actually still working with the sixty thousand budget. I don't know whether that's fully needed or not, but I left it alone. Are there any questions on? And, and forgive me as we race through this, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of assuming that people read or at least had a look and got the general feel of that budget to actual budget to budget document. What you're getting from me is just my take on things and it starts with, I'm, I personally am comfortable that all of this is correct and it's reasonable what it buys. And you're just hearing the extra bits that might not be obvious to everyone, but that came to my attention. Any questions on this one? No. That, that's great. I have to work with the mayor. We are on community services. Okay, this is, this is, we have, we have a new one here. Okay, this is, this is definitely different. But I, after taking everything apart and reorganizing this, I felt I understood what we did here at Gibson's a lot better now that there's this thing called community services. So harbor, marinas, oceanfront is one thing together. And it costs, if it, yeah, if we just assume, okay, what does it cost? Well, right now it's costing one fifty-nine. And I forget what we had, we had a revenue line item way back. But I just wanted to answer that question from earlier. One ninety? So we have revenues of one ninety and expenses of one fifty-nine. So even now in our very first cut, never having intended at the town to look at it that way, we are ahead. And nobody's even made any extra effort or have something come to fruition that would add to it. So that's, that's good. I hope that answers your question or is that what you were trying to explain to me?
Through the mayor.
Through the mayor, sorry. Okay.
Counsel DeAndrati.
I was actually asking if that's what expected, that we profit just two point six a month, right? But I think we will be discussing this on a strategic planning. I think, I think my point is, yeah, good that we are not losing money, but we have a harbor in over the whole town. I know it's not a huge town, but so I think that was my, my point.
That, yeah, and, and your point is taken by the fact that we've got this now. Like we were, we're making space for this kind of planning where we haven't had that before. It's a very significant change. So I'm glad you got that. Counsel Lumley.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, it's great that we're, that I guess we're, we've separated this and you can say, I guess we're making money, but I still, I'm, I, my only other question is, are any of the costs associated with the town even recoverable from the marine function, like from the wharf? Like is, are any of these costs further recoverable? Like, why would, why would like the towns, why would the town have? So just for one instance, why would the town have any sewer or water costs associated with the? with uh the mar, the wharf? Why wouldn't we be recovering those? Uh, insurance, why wouldn't we be recovering those? Like um, that, I just, I was just wondering, like, why, why this?
Recovering as in why isn't the harbor authority paying for them? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or, or could we, yeah, why aren't we billing the harbor authority for these expenses that are incurred by the town because the wharf's there? Like um, why shouldn't it be part of their uh? Especially when, and I'm just going to say, like, especially when you, when you've, uh, we've all, uh, well, Counselor Kroll and you have sat on the, on the, sat in the board meetings, and they, they kind of have a mandate um not to make too much money, I guess. It's like more of a um, but, and there, a lot of their costs are very low. Like they don't charge, like if you looked at their financial statements, they don't charge enough for like hydro and stuff. It's like they're, what they charge and what other marinas and any other place charge is a significant difference. So um, that's all I'm saying. I mean, they could, they could, we could, part and parcel, it's not, I'm not trying to get more money from the wharf, but they can make more money themselves and recover these costs or our costs, right?
I think, I think some of it's for the strategic planning conversation. I don't know if there's any kind of, you know, direct, like, so why, I mean, why is this showing up on our budget for water and sewer, for example? Like, it's a very specific question.
Oh, yeah, because we have parcels of land down there that get these parcel taxes, charge them, and they're not part of parks. They're definitely.
So it's not the, the G H L dot, um, G H L A do, G L H A.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we do charge over insurance, but I just can't find exactly where it is. I think even with breaking out all this detail, there's still some spots where some things are lumped together. There's a place where people with leases and things, where we're charging the back for electricity, insurance, this, that, and the other thing. And it's all in one line item with nonprofits, and technically it's a nonprofit. On the other hand, this could be an example of, oh, great, we've split it out enough now that we can ask ourselves the question, are we remembering to build this to the people it really belongs to? So we'll have a look.
Thank you.
Uh, second part of page thirty four is the I C B C agency. I had mentioned to Mayor White that I had met somebody from the public who was really thinking it was high time that we allocated all the costs in connection with that agency in one spot, because they wanted to see whether um, the revenues covered it. Yeah, we're a bit short, but not very much. But we've got all the costs there now. It's share of I T, uh, space and so on.
I was impressed, a member of the public wanted to ask such a detailed question, but I think, it reminded me, I think Counselor Lumley asked for that one year or two, maybe a couple of years ago, so. And he may have a question associated with it still.
I guess my overarching question is, it's, it loses money. And it's lost money before, and it continues to lose money. And based on what you're budgeting for the next um, I, you know, just quickly, just the, this year, the next two years, um, by twenty twenty seven, it'll be losing fifty seven thousand. I get it, these are estimates and stuff like that, but why wouldn't we? Why, if the revenues, I'm just not sure why we're budgeting more than the revenues that can be taken in, like, say something like overtime. Like, why would anybody at the I C B C office, why are we budgeting overtime for someone there? Like, you know, I, I just, it, you know what? And on, just quickly, like, I think this is one of the things I was going to ask later, and I can, but just kind of, sometimes I'd see a budgeting for overtime. I, I, um, I just don't quite understand that either, but especially with the I C B C. But anyway, I'd like to see the revenues equal the, the costs at least. I think that should be a goal of ours.
Fair enough, yeah. Fair goal. Director?
Yeah, it is um, right, right now, the, the small amount that's being used subsidized is the wrong word, but the small amount that's being paid um is essentially a community service. And fortunately, it is small. But I mean, there's an immense amount of satisfaction from all the customers that come here and use it. It's definitely a, a loved service. I can see that from my time here. What else was I just going to mention on that? Oh, overtime in general, yeah, it is a new call out item. So we used to call out benefits and payroll taxes, which, sorry, in my eyes, wasn't actually that useful. But overtime in local government context, I found very important. One, because it, um, it means that when people are incurring overtime out across the place, it's not disappearing into one wage salary figure. And if you're not part of it, you're not aware of how much overtime's going on. The other uh. So I think it, operationally, management wise, uh, this, your staff should be seeing in their departments how much overtime is going on. The other side is, when I did look at this with our payroll specialist, we went into the accounting application and we found what the actual overtime was for a lot of these amounts. And I was happy to find that we didn't have any runaway situations, which I have experienced working some other local governments. So these figures are approximately what people are doing. And it's just categorized as separate. I think in, in I C B C, sometimes it's very tricky balancing the cash out for the business you've done that day. There's several different people working. Some may have finished up and gone, and there's one person that has to get it straight before they're gone, and that's what happens. Or they're short staff, lots of stuff piles up, and it's going to be cleaned up before the next day, and that's where the overtime happens.
Counselor DeAndrati.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, when I look at the revenue and the expenditure, I was concerned because right now it's closer to thirty three thousand, which is a little bit lower than one percent of tax. Next year is going to be above. And because of what we, you know, our taxes are just increasing, so one percent, it is a big deal to me. So my question is, is there a way of increasing uh revenue to at least offset the one percent? I would like to see, you know, maybe no, no revenue. We don't need to see revenue, I think, but I would like to see this as zero, not a negative thirty two.
I, no expert in our arrangement, but I did wonder, I mean, beyond straight sales of insurance, and that seems to be the commissions we get, and I appreciate that the province and I C B C are supplying a driver tester and so on, but it doesn't seem that there's any revenue amount attributable to offering licensing services. I mean, there are things we can do here that you can't do at a regular insurance office. Like, I can't go into a regular insurer. I can buy I C B C, but I can't get a new driver's license. I can't do that kind of thing. I can't change my provincial IDs. And I'm wondering if we're paid for that.
Yeah, I, I, I wonder, well, I know the answer to this. I wonder if it's a municipal service. It isn't. We know the answer. So we should be getting compensated for it somehow, and, and I agree with the last two counselors. We should be looking for a, for a balance here.
So I put a line that's got no figures in the revenue for I C B C for like, well, what's the compensation for this part? Like making the space available? The staff who work there are spending their time and having to know a lot of stuff in order to be able to process things properly. Yeah. And there's no money coming back our way, or very little. Okay, moving on from I C B C.
Counselor Lumley.
Sorry?
I would like to agree with your comment, though, because um, I, I think, like, the people that work there are awesome, and the experience is great anytime I come in there and use the services. And that's, that's, I don't, it's not like I want to say, hey, just get rid of it. It's, I'd like to just see it as a community service break even and, and remain here for sure. That was my, that's the goal, yeah.
That's a good summary of, I think, the concerns that council shares. Let's move on.
Page thirty five. Economics is open. Well, there may not be a staff member, but there's certainly several people putting a lot of time into working with nonprofit organization partners. Maybe less so on tourism, at least while I've been here, but there's definitely been efforts on film development and housing development. And so um, this is not too dissimilar to the kinds of activities I saw somebody doing at the last local government I was at, all combined together. So that's our estimate of what it's costing. I notice a gap here in blue, but no money is put in the budget. It's just like, wow, there's really a thirty thousand dollar gap for the projects that there's one will appear every year. And while we can do our best with the knowledge and stuff we have in house, sometimes you really do need that person who's expert in whatever that is to help out. I mean, when you think you've got something good has arrived, but just don't have the expertise to dig into it. Visitor Center is still being uh, receiving a fifty thousand dollar contribution. I can't remember exactly who receives it.
Sorry. And we now have an estimate of the value of the four ninety four visitor center space, thirty thousand. So now we know, okay, that's our commitment, plus the money that's coming in from Tourism Commission to make that work. Now, there are three oranges here. Sorry, and then the rest, the rest of the items here are pretty standard. Now, there are three line items here with no money in orange, and they are important. And the mayor and C A O had suggested for budget that they just be put here with no money so that it's on the record it was considered. So I'll start with the one at the bottom, because that's quite straightforward. That's the, the cycling, um, C G S C. And they're, they, they sent a request which essentially said, hmm, we're going to be going out to get grants, and usually the people who, who provide these grants expect you to have a share. Would you be so kind without specifying any amount of money to agree or make some commitment beyond, I think, five thousand they get elsewhere in this budget? To come up with money? Like, give us, or give us a hundred thousand in advance, or something like that. So that's, that's what they were asking for. The Chamber of, and I'm not sure they made a delegation, I think that just came in. The Chamber of Commerce did come as a delegation, and they talked about the trade show that they want to put together and run in twenty five, and an overview of some of their other activities. And they didn't ask for a specific amount of money. It was just, it suggested that, oh, well, you might pay your share of whatever a Sunshine Coast share would be. And as far as I know, there hasn't been any follow up from either of those groups. The top one um is much more challenging or, and maybe easier to understand, but it's the Housing Society. So they came here as a delegation. Again, there was no dollar figure. But what was on their mind was, would the town fund an executive director position and maybe, you know, some kind of administration support position or one or, or none? And it was left at that. There have been a number of emails over the last few months received as reminders, asking if it got put in the budget and so on. So um, I should stop because I can't add more to it.
Okay, I can add a little bit. Just from regional communications. Track, I mean, I think since they made the request, they've uh, um, been kind of, you know, gone, gone further in their project, um, in that uh, identifying that the, the next step they really want to focus on is, is, is uh, pushing for um, the connect the coast route just outside of the town. It's just, just a little bit of the, the, the town um, between Huff Road and Pratt, and then further out all the way to Lower, uh, going the other way. And uh, I think we've, I've had a lot of conversations about this. And really, the, the big step needs to be the S C R D, and the S C R D knows this too. Um, the, the board's been talking about this. Because most of the, uh, most of it is in their jurisdiction. They need to find a way to partner with, uh, cover the coast on it. So that's, that really needs to be the next step. I think we, we, we'd be a, kind of more of a secondary partner for, for our little piece. My position to both connect the coast on behalf of the town and the Ministry of Transportation too has been, our focus is really on the, the, the stretch that goes through the town of Gibson's, um, including um, School Road. Really improving safety there. And that's what our, our focus has been on. And uh, and it continues to be in um, advocating to the ministry. So uh, we're really in no position like that. That's our focus. So we're really in no, no position right now to put a significant, significant amount of money into something that's mostly going to be uh, in, in the S C R D when our, our focus is on working with Ministry of Transportation on, on the highway within the town. Active transportation. So that's been our position. So it, that this makes sense. I mean, I think we'd be in a different place too if uh, uh, the S C R D were saying, yeah, most of this is, is our, our area, we're allocating this amount of money, now your portion is this, and, but we're, we're far from that right now. So that's, that's, that's the update on that. Any questions on that one?
No.
So Chamber of Commerce, um, I know they've applied to um, I C T, uh, which, which has a specific um, pocket of money for conferences. So that makes a lot of sense. Secondly, uh, my, my understanding from uh, my contacts at the District of Seashell is they've had no, they've, they've put forward no money to the Chamber of Commerce, and I know the S C R D has put forward no money. So um, again, this would be a regional partnership and uh, to my knowledge, the other, the other local governments have not come up with anything. And same goes for the next one, Affordable Housing Society. Uh, haven't heard that uh, uh, anyone has come up with any funding for that. That, it is a really concerning one because it's ongoing money, which we brought up when they presented to us. This is the first suggestion was, oh, maybe you can spend some money from your, your housing accelerator fund on this. But then it's like, okay, but then what about the next year? Because we'd have to increase taxes in order to significantly, in order to fund, and then, and then, I mean, fund an outside organization for their staffing, whereas it's housing. So I mean. Another argument, I mean, if we were going to consider that, we might, an idea might be, consider, like, if we want to put more money into housing, maybe we should hire somebody internally in the planning department to, to focus, which, which has actually been a request for us for the last couple of years. So I think that's, that's a really tricky one, uh, I think, to, to that, that ask. Secondly, I did read that uh, um, the Community Foundation has supported them on this, um, at least for a year, I think, in, in, in providing a um. I forget, I forget the amount. It was somewhere between forty and seventy thousand dollars, I think, was, is in my head to, to help them with staffing. So um, that's the update on that one. Counselor DeAndrati.
Thank you. I just want to remind that when we examine taxes, we are contributing to them too. So, and we did last year. And I don't know the figures, but it is substantial. And taxpayers are paying, so we are already paying to the, their service in a certain way, right?
That, that's another piece, yeah. And also, also when it comes to the Affordable Housing Society and the local government's contribution to it over the years, the town of Gibson's has contributed funding to that, that organization, and the other local governments haven't. So we're, we're, no. Um, I mean, I know, I know, our Affordable Housing Fund is, has, has gone towards helping them. They've come, come to this uh, room in the past asking for funding. And um, I think this was, it was before, I mean, the, the board has changed and everything. There's different people there. I don't know if they, they realize it, but we had, I know the, the last term of council gave them funding uh, for staffing and other costs. And uh, um, so it doesn't, I think, it, it seems to make more sense that maybe the other, the other, if anyone's going to start helping out, it should, the other government should should maybe take the lead first. Counselor DeAndrati.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it will be great for council and for, for the public as well to know exactly how much we contribute. I don't know where this could be in the budget, but I think it will be nice to, and including But I think it will be nice to, and including the exemption, the taxes, how much this, you know, this means because at the end of the day, we are paying for that.
In the past, you mean?
Well, yeah, even, yeah, since whatever year since we started, that has been the contribution from the town. I think it's, it's quite significant.
Yeah, the, the, the former um Director of Finance printed me out a, a um, report on that. I think um, last year or so, so that's possible. Counselor Lumley.
Yeah, maybe it has a small part to do with it too, Mayor, but the, when you look on the expenditures like uh four nine four Visitors Information Center, I mean, still, like, I still question the fact that, you know, there's multiple like uh uh Airbnbs and rentals and Gibson's paying and paying the, the tax. And I mean, it just disappears. Like it just leaves town and never comes back. So maybe it could uh do we get a check, an M R D T check?
Where, where that goes is um, it's really complicated. I've, I've gone, gone over this with a, a few people like it. I think it goes, goes to the Ministry of Finance in Victoria, then they allocate it to Destination B C who then, who then allocate it to Sunshine Coast Tourism. And Sunshine Coast Tourism even has, has to put in some kind of plan to Destination B C on how they're going to spend it. And then Ministry of Finance has some oversight to it too. But then, there's all this complication. But then, there's this arbitrary stuff that happens too. Like it's just, it's decided that regardless, all the money is just collected. It's never determined where what, what parts of the Sunshine Coast and Powell River it comes from. So it's just all big one pot, pot of money. And then they split it in half and they send fifty percent to the Catat area and fifty percent to the Lower Sunshine Coast. So it's very arbitrary. And then, and then from there on, it gets
Do we get a check?
I forget what happens in the Powell River area, but here it goes to the Sunshine Coast Regional District. And uh, they spend it on uh the, the Housing Coordinator position.
Okay, why can't we recover some of it? Like we've got two line items here, Visitor Center and uh these are, these are both tourism-based operations put, paid for by the town. Why, I don't know how we can't get some cost recovery there from the, uh, from the Regional District then if they're getting the M R T.
We're talking about something else now. Sorry, I was talking about housing.
Either one, it's, no, no, they're, they can all be lumped in together if you want. I'm just looking at like a budget increase here of thirty thousand dollars and another budget item of fifty thousand dollars. I'm just thinking, okay, if they're tourism cost centers or at least the Visitor Information Center is for sure, fifty thousand dollars, then well, how comes nothing comes back? Like that's a, that's a, that's a tourist. That's all I'm just trying to relate. The Airbnbs are paying into the, into the M R D T and the town of Gibson's is providing a tourist information center, but we don't get any money. Like all the tax collected in, in Gibson's essentially disappears. Am I missing something here?
No, I just explained where the, uh, C A O.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, they, they are two separate things. So this, this fifty thousand is, is the, used to be the forty-five thousand we pay for providing the service, providing the, receiving visitors, providing information, that kind of thing. Even in the past, the, that figure of forty-five thousand held through for the last ten years at least, I would say. Uh, the difference is here, we're recognizing that we have a building that we provide space that never got recognized before. It was just one of those costs that went into general admin. And even our little Vic Center, which was also between bathrooms and the little park in the building. I don't know, probably didn't spend thirty, but we spent a fair amount. So it comes, so under that tourism program on paper is fifty, but in reality is more like eighty, including the building and so on. The, the M R D T portion, it's a separate thing and it's, and it's a, particularly after COVID, when the province allowed an increase in the M R D T to, and one percent of that could go into housing. That money, how the province determined the money for our region is very it lacks a lot of detail. It's like Sunshine Coast, here's your, and they're not willing to separate even as a mayor was saying, Powell River, Southern Coast, even within our, even if we just take fifty percent of that, we are, don't have a way to say how much do we actually should collect on behalf of our communities on, on the, the units that come from here? When you add all the short-term rentals and the hotel rooms and stuff. We can't get that separation. So we can't say, we want to see the two hundred thousand that the region gets in M R D T for housing money. Uh, it's, we uh, we, we're not able to recover any of that because we don't know for sure. We would have to get everybody to agree for, um, but even then, I don't think that we can just get, get it back. Sort of a one-way tax in some ways. But it's not separated.
Yeah, and I've, and I've raised that to Sunshine Coast Tourism and they have, they wish they had that. They wish more than us that they had that data because they would love to be able to break down where, where the tourism is happening and uh where the, the M R D T is being collected. But the way the provincial, the province collects the money, it just goes into one pot. And uh, it's like I said, well, I'd love to find a way to, and I know, because this council's brought this up before, to, to advocate to them to, to do a better job of uh keeping track of where the money's coming from. And uh, they, they totally support us on that, that Sunshine Coast Tourism would, would appreciate that actually. So we'll work on it. It's uh
Returning, we're uh still on page thirty-five of fifty-five. So we've gone through the Economic Development section. There had been as part of a review, I'm just referring to the bottom, the single listed operating project has no money. There was a discussion as part of looking at how B C Assessment was working on the valuation of uh development properties, particular those that had moved through a stage. And out of that discussion came the notion that there were um maybe some significant uh properties here that deserved um updated appraisals and assessments of what their potential were now and in the future. So it was somewhat important work to do sooner or later. But when this budget was coming together or, you know, the first cut, it was just like, oh, I'm just not sure right now is the right time for thirty thousand unless it shows up in planning or somewhere in development services that they agree to do it and they've got the money to make it so. But I, so since it had been in a report as a recommendation and council had said, yes, do it. I just wanted to flag that, well, it's not here and, and I hope you're okay with that. But if you're not, well, we could put the money back in, but at, at your pleasure. Page thirty-six. I'll take that as don't put the money back in. Thirty-six fifty-five. Okay, now it's worth, okay, we'll just have a quick look at, at four ninety-four. There are several pages of properties. Many of them have no numbers because the, it demonstrates the town has truly handed over the responsibility for those properties to the nonprofit organization tenants. In four ninety-four, we've just got to the point in twenty-twenty-five where everything in it is leasable either to ourselves or others. So there's a bit of a breakdown up top. It just shows how we went about doing the breakdown. We assume the visitor's center has twenty-five percent of the value. Uh, the nonprofit, uh, small business, individual entrepreneur, uh, the efforts they're making there, that space, twenty-five percent of the value because they've both got the light in the windows. And then the remaining part, um, about fifteen percent going to essentially the core engineering group, our infrastructure office. And all of it has been spread around. Uh, but I just wanted to show on the twenty-five column there, total estimated annual cost ninety-five, a substantial part of it is amortization true. But it's uh, it's been allocated to the key parties there and that's what implied that the value that the nonprofit business-oriented group are getting space worth about uh thirty-five thousand. And it's just for the sake of splitting these out so we have a better idea. I'll just flip through the next few pages in case anyone's interested in a property. Go.
It's really stuffy in here.
Okay, yeah, no, no.
It's so disruptive.
No, don't, don't take us through the next page. We could just move past the nonprofit buildings. Okay. Actually, more seriously, there, there isn't anything that I came across as like, you know, odd, strange. It, it's what you would expect. Personally, as the accounting guy, I'm much more happy that it's at least spread out now and I understand which things people are or are not doing because it was a bit of a mystery before this got laid out. Yeah. Counselor DeAndrati.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a general question. Sorry, forgive for my ignorance. Amortization, I think I understand the concept, right? Is the depreciation we are counting, right, when we have to substitute or replace or whatever. But for example, in this case here, seventy-five thousand dollars. So is this money going to a reserve or what, what happened? That's what I want to understand. There's a lot of amortization through the, through the budget.
Yes, and, and the only useful purpose it serves, but it's a good one, is that's based, an estimate based on historic cost of how much we're chewing up in the value of that building each year. So we can quickly add through it and say, wow, we've used up a hundred thousand dollars of our nonprofit buildings. And then the purpose is to look to our reserves and say, well, if we're not actually reinvesting a hundred or we're not working with them to help raise the money that they reinvest a hundred thousand, are we putting a hundred thousand dollars away or is our intention just to run these things into the ground and close them? That's, that's the primary reason to have the amortization in here. Less exciting, uh, the CPA regulatory side of things says that amortization must be in our five-year plan. In this grand summary sheet, there's a single line item in revenues that has the total amortization, capital assets amortization in brackets, used in service, one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand. And then when you go down in the bottom half to expenditures to all those departments and things where the amortization is listed, it's part of their departmental budgets. So if you have parks, infrastructure and you chewing up a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of value plus all of your cash expenses, that's what's showing as parks and in a, in a given year. Oh, I, I, I did, is that good? Okay. I did skip over one thing that connects to this that's pretty important, actually. If we could, if you could turn to page thirty-seven of fifty-five and you'll see at the bottom, six eighty-six Harmony Lane Senior Center, lease one dollar. And then you'll see in a box up top, which is not added into the budget numbers, but it's this very issue of like, hey, they've got complete control of this. And that's wonderful because they're raising money, forty-five thousand and twenty-three, hundred and six thousand and twenty-four, and they're using that to renovate. So the town is is, is moving with its efforts also to provide taxable receipts for these kinds of groups and so on to say, hey, if you have the museum building or whoever it is, what's the plan? Everything's going great at the Heritage Playhouse? That's wonderful. Oh, you're thinking that a major thing needs to be done starting in five years? Okay. We support that and don't forget we can do the charitable donation receipts. But to start tracking a bit and of course, if they do the charitable donations through us, the town gets to see all of the money comes to us. We make the records for the receipts and then when the time is right, we give the money right back to the groups to do the, the work, but we can see that people are raising money. So there are a number here where clearly they're not raising any money. It hasn't been a priority. And I'm just suggesting that using this budget tool over the next coming year or two or whatever, there'll be a chance to talk with different people on that and talk about the expectations and the reality that if they think that council has a big reserve cushion for their building to come along at some point for major renovation, well, that's just not, not true. And here's how everyone's doing it and we have several examples of where it works and they can explain how to go about it. That takes us through to the end of Community Services. Thirty-nine. So the next up is Protective Services. Oh, sorry, was there any? Go, Protective Services, page forty of fifty-five. Excuse me. Light reorganization. So uh, bylaw enforcement, housing outreach program, emergency operations centers, some grants and donations directly related to that, some listed operating projects. There were no, there was, there was nothing unusual in uh bylaw. All the changes were explainable. Under the HOP, all the blue items in the column are just so that you can see that these are the things B C Housing looks after.
Just looking at the time, William, I'm sorry. Um, but I just want, I, I want to make sure all, because we're going to have to start to leave. I mean, I've got a hard out at three o'clock. Counselor Lumley needs to leave now.
You want a more summarized version for the rest of this?
Could we, could we just do like a quick summary of the rest of it and then, and then, and then we'll get to
Get to the main event?
Yeah, yeah, if we can, we might have two minutes for the main event and then, I, I mean, if we have to get back into this level of detail later, maybe we can do that.
Okay, sure. There were Protective Services. Um, I didn't find anything unusual. I didn't change anything. It, it's, it's good to go. The next one up, page forty-two, Policing Services. The only thing that's new here is that, oh, okay, we, we've got the R C M P contract all sorted out for its start in twenty-seven. All of the numbers here came from the numbers you saw late summer, early fall and blessed, and it was, use the conservative assumptions. So I've done that. And that takes us to Parks and Recreation Services. And it's another one that has been reorganized a bit, but in, in, in the end, there's Parks Operations, page forty-four. Their Workshop, page forty-five, Waste Bin Collection Townwide. And although they have many properties to look after, the listed ones are the same as they were before. And there was nothing strange about any of those in terms of putting a budget together. And that takes us to Transportation Services, page forty-eight. Um, this is another one that got a, a little reorganization so we can all understand for sure what's there. Public Works Operations, Public Works Yard, Road, Sidewalks, Ice and Snow, Traffic and Street Lights. Geo Utility has a small amount of carryforward costs. Then on page fifty, we have the big list of all of our equipment and vehicles including their amortization costs. So we've got a big total at the bottom of the page. And then we turn over page fifty-one. There we are, sharing the costs amongst the user groups, the core services. So some, for example, like council and legislative, no, no share. It's all fully allocated. And we have transportations listed operating projects straight off the project list. That's Transportation Services. There was nothing strange in there. A lot of the benefit from the work that was done was just getting it clearer, how the bits fit together. Waste Services on page fifty-two, you have seen and blessed, no changes there. Uh, Drainage Storm Order, page fifty-four. You haven't seen this one. It's um, got the same items as in prior years. I just did want to flag for you in the middle of the sheet where it's green. Okay, uh, just reiterating, we're monitoring the watershed at about sixty-five thousand a year. We've got to spend at least another five thousand a year on White Tower. And they, they don't have any other contingency gap for engineering and so on. At the bottom of the page though, they have some significant uh projects underway. So I'm not sure they're, I think they've covered every base that you could be doing some engineering consulting on in twenty-twenty-five. So they're probably fine. So they're probably fine. And the Director of Infrastructure still has the 60,000 back in the infrastructure budget box general for something that just comes out of nowhere. That takes care of page 54. Fifty-five can be ignored, but it will be more useful later. It basically goes, and there is work this year to determine whether drainage should move into a utility, and if it did, page two gives you a picture of how things would look. And the takeaway there is, wow, this is going to cost a lot of money, but it's just reflecting all the things we're not doing right now in terms of capital. So this is all the detail in the budget. And coming back to where we started, we found on page 15 of 55 that this is all great, but we still have a sixty, 651,000 revenue gap. And page nine of 55 just said, well, this is such a large amount of money that the only way, well, of course, it's not the only way. I feel that, that staff's advice is there's no way around it. A higher tax increase in the order of something like Seashell, which I believe is 8.8, but you know, higher levels. Oh, yeah, there's...
Seven point seven one.
Okay? That, that we need...
I'm not saying that's exactly what we need to do, and I'm saying that's Seashell ended up at...
So most of this needs a higher amount of municipal taxes, and the remainder, which will still be a significant amount, is for staff to go away and sort out. And I do feel that we could sort out 220,000. So at this point, the purpose of this committee meeting, from at least staff's perspective, going back to that report, was could we have the committee's guidance on what would be the maximum that you would be prepared to support?
Yeah. Counselor Lumley.
Plus, I know we can't do this in one day, right? So, but I have some, I have some ideas in the budget that I, I mean, can we put those forward?
Yeah, I think this is the time, yeah.
Not right, well, no, I've got, I've got lots, and I've made some notes on others, but can I put them forward at some point, like before the next meeting? Like, do you want to put it in a report or something, or, or forward it to the Director of Finance?
Like what, what...
We're not setting the rate right now, though, today.
Yeah, we are.
Really?
Just giving some general direction on it. I mean, do we want to? I think what, what, what the director is getting to is that, I mean, we're, I think what his report says, we're kind of looking at a, it says a maximum of 10%. And that's the kind of range. It's a higher, higher, closer to 10, I think, is, is where we, we need to. Also, I mean, it, it does say maximum, but that's, that's what we're hearing, is that's what we need to kind of balance things. I'm all, but I've also, I mean, my, my reading of what we've seen today, too, is that a lot of what, how we've been getting by with this, this discrepancy is the surplus that comes forward is, is paying off a lot of the, the difference. And we want to have a little more, what we're working towards is a little more planning and surety about that rather than just kind of relying on a surplus. Counselor Kroll.
Thank you, Mayor White. The Director of Finance referred to 200 and some odd thousand that you think you could trim from 55 pages?
Through, through the mayor, we would certainly be able to identify things that would, would find that money in 2025. Some of those, they wouldn't be like permanently gone, they would just be temporarily.
So in light of that, let's say...
Without triggering service quality changes. We could do that at that level. If you said, oh, no, all of it has to be financial cut, I mean, cuts to the budget of 650,000, then we'd be getting into services to do that, that level of...
Just to be candid, you know, I remember my first year sitting in budget, and the Director of Infrastructure was presenting his report, and we said, how much do you need? And he said 10%.
Sounds like that.
And, you know, we have been, I think we've been very prudent and very frugal and, you know, look to, you know, trying to lessen the impact for various reasons, but, you know, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. And, you know, having less than a million dollars in a contingent, in a, in a surplus fund in the event of an emergency or something is, I think, one of those things that causes people to lose sleep.
We have reserves, yeah.
In the reserves. So if, if, let's say you could trim 100, 150,000, what percentage would you want?
I'm gonna, I don't know, is it? I thought we set the direction here, but I think we, maybe we should just discuss it more of a council. I mean, I know this is, this is kind of, it is the style of some governments to go where council just follows what the staff asks for, but I want, I want to make sure we have a bit of a discussion before, if we get, if we're going to get to that question. I mean, it's, it's here, I think. But if you want to answer it, go ahead.
Well, not necessarily answer it, but just clarify, where does this 10 come from? At least from my perspective is I, to ask the community for any more than 10%, no matter what your need is, I just can't understand. It's a very large amount to ask. There's a limit to how much you can ask. We're in the long term, so we should be able to plan ourselves not...
Yeah, I want to, I want to put some context in this, too, in that, that a lot of this has to do with policing, I think, because, I mean, even if we aren't putting, we're not needing to put police, policing money in this year, we had to aggressively do it the last two years, and we had, other than the policing, we had very small increases, 1.5 two years ago, over, over and above the policing, 5%. At 3% last year. And that, that's at a time when a lot of other municipalities were able to do like an 8% without having to pay for policing. We're the only ones, aside from Cumberland and a couple others, who are having to deal, Owen Island, having to deal with this. So we, I, I still see this year as being squeezed by policing. And our, I think our, our, our plan going into this year was to try to not, try to avoid like a double-digit tax increase by making, when policing came, by having, making sure we did like fives every year. So my hope is that without, even without that five, we'd still be in that same range of like around 8%, which is what we had last year. So like, just to try to be consistent, not have a big jump to double digits or, now, now that we don't have policing, go, okay, now we can only, we can do a 2%. Like, we can't do that. We clearly can't do that. I've got Counselor Lumley next.
Sorry, yeah, through the mayor. There was some, I, I actually have them on a piece of paper, like a, anyway, it's not here, but I did have the notes that I transferred from here over there, and I was, I was saying, you know, I'd like the same thing, I, obviously, but I, I found, if you just go through, when I went through the budget originally, if you just take some of the higher percentage items and, and, you know, because it's just a daunting task, obviously, but if you just, even on, even on council and legislative services, I mean, we can, we can make some changes to that, and I, I think we can, we can save either 5% or 6% there. And there's other places you can just, you know, either you, you, I don't know, I think there's ways to like bring the, like, the ones in this that I had here is like equals like just over a point and a half down, and that's just from council and legislative services, which is, which is at a 15% increase. I think you can get that down to 10. And then you have significant increases in transportation and parks and recreation. If we could find ways, like, there's a couple of things that I thought of in my, like in detail. I mean, it's, I'm not saying like restrict services, I'm just saying, like we do every year, you can say, how important is this this year? You know, can it wait? You know? I mean, you know? Anyway, there's, I think there's ways to bring it down, but I'm, I'm kind of with the mayor saying that, yeah, double digits was, it would just be, would just be crazy. I was thinking even, what was Seashells?
Seven point seven one.
Yeah, 7.5.
It's 7.5 to 8 kind of range, I think is what I was, I was prepared for. Counselor DiAndretti?
Thank you, Mayor. It's more a question. I just want to really understand, on the page nine, it says option for resolving revenue in blue, and it says 2025 municipal taxation increase of 10%, but then it's the B C assessment, 1%, so the actual tax increase is 9%? Is that what I'm reading? So if we go 8% for example, that means 1%? Well, okay, just a clarification of what it, what this mean.
Sure. Clarifications. The budget is put together last year for 25 was going to have a 9% increase. Clarification. In terms of this figure here, what that's essentially saying is that the, the role has gotten bigger, there's more taxable properties to share the load, and the, the benefit wasn't very big for 25, it's only 1%. But what it means is, if you said, okay, go ahead, have the equivalent of a 10% tax increase, 433,426 in additional revenue, when we run that through the tax rate setting with and allocate it out to the properties, we would see that, oh, now this thing says the overall tax increase is 9. So we have that to work with. And the other clarification on that part there about draft budget cost reductions of 5%, that's, that's still 218,000, and that's going to require some careful picking here and there, but that, most of that will be dancing on the labor front, is where most of that money will come from. The other thing is like, yes, of course, we could sit down and we could go back through the budget and do a version three. But when we comb out all of those things and try and say, okay, temporarily, you could get away and not do in 25, when we go about it that way, it means we have no hope of anything falling out to fix our surplus problem. So we don't want to be generous with a budget that's got lard all over the place. We, we certainly don't have that. This is pretty tight. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I don't, but I mean, I, I think you also acknowledged earlier, we're not going to fix our surplus problem overnight. So I mean, it's just, it's going to be a gradual approach, and maybe it'll be, I mean, and it took, it's largely, it's kind of a, it's a bit of a risk relying on surplus, for sure, but it's kind of a theoretical problem, too, because, I mean, we have been able to balance budget with a surplus over the, over these years. It's not a, I, I respect it's not the best way to do it, and we're moving away from that, though. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. I'm just seeking some clarification on the numbers. So we're talking a 15% gap, correct? Based on this budget? The number suggested was 225K that could be sorted out, which is equivalent to a little over 5%, correct?
Yep.
So if we're talking an approximate 7.5% to 8%, what is that number? Can I just, I just want to have all my numbers straight.
That number.
Yeah. What, that, that difference between...
He's got the big calculator out.
Yeah, thank you.
So you want to have a tax increase of 8%? Or are you looking for that?
Exactly, yeah. That was the number that was discussed here.
Because of the non-market value, we can tax revenue-wise, 9%. So we'd get nine times 43, 343, we would get 390,000.
Thank you.
Which is 9% worth of revenue, but we get the one-off, so publicly, when the rates get calculated, out jumps eight, that's like the overall number.
I'll make a motion to increase 8%.
So how do we want to... Do that at this point? Like, is it more to ask for that, to set that general direction out to work on a budget that would be that, with, based on that increase? That's what we usually do, I think, is kind of...
Yeah, it could be a target increase of overall tax increase of eight.
Yeah.
And then you know that I'll be taking nine times a tax rate...
Sure.
To serve up 390,000 revenue, and then, just to keep the numbers simple, stop that go away, and find 260,000.
And Counselor Lumley will send you an email with all of the ideas about how to do it.
Going with chips, aliens, skyline.
I just got an email about that.
It worked. Yeah. Just takes a while. Just don't do it before.
Okay. So I've got a mover for that motion. It's our seconder, seconded by Counselor Kroll. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? The motion carries. Okay, so that, that gives you a lot of work to do now, so I don't know if you need anything more from us.
I'm good to go.
Okay.
I mean, you're right, there's lots of work to do, but the key element to work towards is that, and that's exactly what we need to...
Okay, great. Thank you for all your work so far, and like, I mean, I, I mentioned it earlier, I don't know if everyone here knows this, but yeah, I'm, William's been, speaking of overtime, William's been working a lot of overtime on this. He's, he's here late into the night, he's here on the weekends, and, and his staff has also done a tremendous amount of work on this, so thank you.
We can see the results.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Kroll, seconded by Counselor Lumley. All those in favor? The meeting's adjourned.
That's it, you're all well and free.
See you next time, sir.
There's a tight line. Let's...
You're welcome, thank you.